Other meetings to follow, so we want to stick to a strict time schedule. So, this meeting, this public hearing is called into order, and now would the secretary please read the meeting notice?
The Board of School Directors of the School District of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, will hold a public hearing to consider the application of the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences in accordance with the Charter School Law, 24 PS Section 17-1701-A. On Wednesday, December 18th, 2013, in the auditorium at East High School, 1001 Atkin Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16503, at 5:00 PM, public comment will be accepted at the hearing by request of the President, John C. Harkins.
And now the roll call.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Here.
Mr. Casillo?
Here.
Mr. Fabrizi?
Here.
Mrs. McNair?
(coughs)
Mr. Petrunger?
Here.
Ms. Shenley?
(inaudible).
She's absent for the time being.
Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
Here.
Mrs. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here. And now the purpose and procedures for the evening, as pertains to this public hearing. The Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences. This is a charter school hearing for a charter school application submitted to the School District of the City of Erie. The General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania enacted the Charter School Law of Pennsylvania in June of 1997. This law permits independent public schools established and operated under a charter from the local Board of School Directors in which the students are enrolled or attend. A charter school must be organized as a public nonprofit corporation. Charters may not be granted for, to for-profit entities. The Charter School Law was established to provide students and community members with the opportunity to establish and maintain schools that operate independently from the existing school district structure to accomplish the following goals. One, improve pupil learning. Two, increase learning opportunity through all pupils. Three, encourage the use of different and innovating teaching methods. Four, create new professional opportunities for teachers, including the opportunity to be responsible for the learning program at the school site. Five, provide parents and pupils with expanded choices in the types of educational opportunities that are available within the public school system. And six, hold the schools established under this act accountable for meeting measurable academic standards and provide the school with a method to establish accountability systems. An applicant desiring to establish a charter school must submit to the local Board of School Directors the application by November 15th, 2013, if said charter school intends to operate in the 2014-2015 school year. On or about November 13th, 2013, a charter school application was submitted to the School District of the City of Erie by the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences. Within 45 days of receiving the application, the local Board of School Directors in which the proposed charter school is to be located shall hold at least one public hearing and the provisions of the charter school application in accordance with the Sunshine Act. At least 45 days must transpire between the first public hearing and the final decision of the school board on the charter school application. But the final decision must not be later than 75 days after the first public hearing on the application. So here we are at step one with the opening, uh, public hearing, and I want to say at the outset that we are operating under a strict time constraint because we have a meeting of the school board at 6:00, and we have another meeting of the school board at 7:00 on general business purposes. So for us to have a cushion in between, uh, if this meeting should last longer than 45 minutes, 5:45, it will be recessed until a date disagreeable between all parties after the first of the year. So, we, we will not short, diminish, or shrink, or pressure the presenters from having their opportunity to present their full case, but for tonight's sake, to start the open of the public hearing, which likely will have to be recessed, we'll see. But I ask the presenters to, uh, use their judgment to present, perhaps with 20 minutes to allow 10 minutes of public comment, and we're going to allow our solicitor 15 minutes of, uh, questions and comments, and end this, recess this hearing at 5:45 because we need to go about our other school district responsibilities at that time. So we'll begin, uh, with that in mind, I just wanted at the outset everyone to understand that if we don't conclude tonight, we'll recess and continue after the first of the year, and I'm asking the presenters to not feel pressured, but make their presentation as they feel comfortable, and that plus any public comment we can fit in up until 5:30 we will, and then we'll give the school district solicitor 15 minutes, and this will be recessed until after the first of the year. So, I now ask the presenters to begin, uh, to present. Mr.?
If I can suggest, Mr. President, that those individuals that have not signed the sheet, uh, they obviously will have opportunity maybe at the next hearing when we'll get them, but they probably should sit down at this point, and we'll get to them.
Or if they could move that, uh, that list off to the side to allow the presenters to use the podium, perhaps they could move off to the, I can't see out there, out to the right.
Okay. You ready, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Al Messina. I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Erie and a member of the founding coalition of the Huxley School. The founding coalition of the Huxley School has the unqualified support of one of Erie's venerable social and educational institutions, the Boys and Girls Club, now in its 119th year of operation in the city of Erie. An agency that has a talented and dedicated Board of Directors, an agency that unlike some of the community groups that try to start charter schools, has considerable financial assets and a long history of achievement in education-based programming. Boys and Girls Clubs of America, our national organization, has been emphasizing education-based programming since the 1980s. I was, at that time, both a former teacher and the Assistant Director of the National Program Department of Boys and Girls Clubs of America, which enabled me to play a leading role in establishing education as a core emphasis of our national programming. Today, in 2013, with citizenship and health ranking two and three, the national organization's number one priority and our local programmatic priority is education, as evidenced in part by our highly successful operation of a preschool for more than a decade. The club enjoys another exceptional asset that I want to mention here today, and that's our staff, which I believe is the best we've had in my 22 years as Executive of the organization. They're well-educated, they're experienced, with 11 years as the average tenure of full-time staff, and with 60% of them, former members of the club. The club, then, I think it's fair to say, is a well-respected, non-profit Erie institution with a decades-long commitment to education. And if you ask the question, does the club work? Well, to borrow a phrase from our national spokesman, Denzel Washington, it did for me. So we're not just some grassroots group looking for a niche in the public education system. We're not privatizers looking to graft business bromides onto an already over-regulated and encumbered public system. We're not here to offer more of the same, whether it's longer school days, or more metrics, or more standards, or more segmentation of student populations, and then try to pass off this prosaic and unimaginative stuff as educational reform, let alone educational innovation. What we are is a long-established, institutionally and programmatically potent, one could even say iconic Erie institution with a storied history, a deep dedication to improving the life chances of children, and an innovative vision of what public education can become if and only if the public system has the courage, the wisdom, and the will to change a paradigm that no longer works for many of the students it's supposed to serve. But considering that this is a kind of preliminary hearing, if you will, with a time limit conveyed to us in writing by the district's council of 45 minutes, I'm going to defer presenting our vision of what public education can and ought to be until the next hearing, which we've been informed will be held sometime in January, and thereby allow time today for public comment and for any questions the district might have. Uh, thank you. At this point, I'd like to turn things over to Dr. Kurtz. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Board and Mr. Senate. Congratulations, Mr. Harkins. We're well aware of the time restraint given us, and, uh, we had some discussions of how much we would be able to really do tonight to, to put this, uh, total application in perspective for you. We would ask, of course, that you, between the period of today and the time that we meet again in January at some mutually agreed date, that you take some time to really look at the key issues that I'm going to touch on today. A lot of what goes into an application is pretty standard when you talk about how you're going to work with ELL or special ed youngsters and, and certain legal things that would have to be in every application, but the key is to look at the educational piece and the philosophy and the vision that drives this particular proposal. I do want to put on the record, though, a, some interesting, uh, reasons why this, we believe there's a, a critical need for this kind of, uh, school in Erie. When you look at the statistics and the records that have been just published by the state, information provided by the district, we find some very startling information. You have one, there's four high schools in the district, and you have one that is a, a model high school, one that does remarkably wonderful, outstanding things with and for the students it serves. Collegiate is a model that, that if every school in Erie could just work the way it works and perform the way it, it did, we wouldn't have to be here. We don't think would be a need, although we think what we're doing is unique and can meet many of the needs of a lot of the youngsters in the other three schools who just aren't getting some of the benefits that the collegiate kids are getting. When we look at the statistics, 100% of the kids at collegiate graduate. 91.18 is a magical number that is based on the new school performance profile. State requires 70. There, there's a few schools in the state that actually hit over 100, but collegiate hit 91.8. It's an extraordinary score for a school profile, and it's one that every kid who goes to collegiate ought to be proud of at school, the teachers who work there, and you sta, uh, you sitting up front ought to take a lot of credit for that. But the difference between collegiate and the other three high schools is startling. And of course, one of the reasons we, we know, you know, that collegiate is successful, it's much like the Central High School of Philadelphia, is that it has criteria for admission, and only the young people who meet those criteria, academic and otherwise, can go to the school, in effect. If they don't meet that criteria for admission, they can't go, and they're then relegated, in effect, to go to the other local high schools of, of, in most cases, in their, in their neighborhood. There isn't a whole lot of choice, but if there were choice, what you would find is that the graduation rates in those three schools vary from 77% to 87%. That the school performance profiles for those three schools, none of them hit 50. 70, by the way, is the state minimum requirement. None of them. Last, the last reporting year for AYP, only one of the four schools made AYP. I don't have to tell you who that was. It was collegiate. Not of no problem. The other three schools didn't come close. When it comes to the SAT scores, collegiate scores average 1125 in math and reading. The students do remarkably well. In the other three schools, they run from 739 to 870, over a 300-point difference for many of these youngsters. There is a difference, and a lot of it isn't just a criteria, but it, there is an absolute correlation between poverty and income and the ability of kids to be able to come to school fully prepared, motivated, and able to be successful. 30% of the students who come to collegiate are what we would call educationally disadvantaged. In the other three schools, it runs from 71 to 78%. Startling difference. Uh, yeah, money does matter in terms of, of personal income. There are zero kids who are ELL at collegiate. There are less than 1% kids at collegiate who are special needs. So it means all the other youngsters who attend the three high schools have to just deal with all those challenges, as do the teachers. And I don't think there's anything wrong with the teachers, or their efforts, or their desire, or what the district is trying to do, but I think what you are doing is you're not meeting the needs of a lot of those young people simply because you're working in a traditional high school. It's a traditional high school, the kids go to school, do what kids did in high school when you went to school and I went to school. Some of you say it was good enough for me, it's good enough for them, but maybe you had so many advantages that many of the, uh, young people, for example, at the, uh, Central High, uh, High School, where 26% of them are special ed, and 4% are ELL students, and 73% are students of poverty. So maybe you had some more advantages, maybe I did too. So what we're asking you to do is look at that picture, and it's startling, and it's not, it's not that it isn't that way in a lot of urban districts, it is what it is, at least the, the students who attend collegiate. Because of the unique mix of kids, and because of where they're coming from, many of them take advantage of what's presented, and they succeed. And wouldn't it be wonderful if all your kids could succeed at the rate that the kids at collegiate do? Huxley is, is, is creating a, a model that's based on the, uh, on the philosophy of, of a gentleman by name of Henry Huxley. And he is, and we have a lot of things about him in our application, but basically, he, he looked at somebody who is educated, who knows something about everything and everything about something. What we're proposing to do, and what we think is unique, is all, all our students, like all high school students, will, will, will have then, uh, have a regular high school academic program as required by law with, and meeting, uh, the common core standards in the areas approved by the state and the state standards in the other areas, but each one of them will have a period of exploration and a period to look at what is their interest levels, what is their, what are their talents, what are, what are the gifts they bring to the table, and we're going to work to develop with them in a mentoring system, in an individual program where they can spend those four years as part of, each day, as part of their regular program, looking in that area of interest. It may not even be an interest that they want to make a career out of, it may be an area of interest that they just are fascinated by. We don't know that because we don't know who our, who our students are yet, but we do know we have over 60% pre-enrollment already, and that's, that's a pretty good sign that there's a lot of young people out there who believe that they'd like to have an opportunity to do something different than what's going on in their regular high school today, and we think that we want to provide that. So as we read through the application, and, and I'm not going to do it all because of time, and I, I appreciate what you're going through tonight with three meetings, we outline our core principles, which basically talks about having a mentor teacher and how the kids working to master an area of content in their major area and other mandated content. They will study an area, whatever it may be, and we will find the mentors within our staff and within the volunteers of our, our partner organizations, the, the kind of stuff that Boys and Girls Club have done for decades, of bringing in hundreds of volunteers to work with their, their students, and we'll try to create for each student that individualized base of the study, and it'll be based on their choice and supported and facilitated by their individual mentor. That's a key piece of our program. That's something that, and we can do it because we're not going to be a big school, we're not looking to, to create a school of 1,000. We're going to have a school of 75 youngsters per grade, a total of 300, and we'd like to see if what we do has such an impact that maybe we do, well, maybe we hit something in looking at the paradigm, and maybe there's something there that the district itself can look at our model and maybe make some adaptations so that all the kids who come to Erie get the kind of educational program they deserve. Um, that, that's the key point of it, and as you go through our application, and that's the section I want you to read, you will note that we are very careful in how we established our goals. Our goals are all, all clearly, uh, centered around that major piece, as well as looking at the requirements of, of the state, uh, looking at keystones and how do our, how are our kids going to qualify in order to meet all state standards. We have a lot of good information in there about liberal arts education, what it is, and how it can relate to the kind of school we're trying to create. I don't want to read all that stuff to you because of time, that's why I'm asking you, uh, before our next meeting, that you do the same. We've outlined in there a liberal arts framework for you that shows all the, how, how a typical year will go for each of our students in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and into 12th grade. It's important to note, as they go through this process, that we believe that they will have completed enough academic qualifications, in many cases, uh, with dual coursework, uh, work to even be able to go directly into college with at least one or two years of college under their belt. It's an ambitious project. It's a courageous project. The people who are behind this have a vision for the kids of, of Erie. They want all the young people in Erie to have some of the advantages and some of the opportunities that the kids at collegiate have. Everybody's proud of that school. I'm sure every student here from collegiate is proud of their own school, and they should be. They're doing remarkable things, but they're just one little piece, and there's a big piece. And if you look at the big piece of, of what Erie School District is and how it's succeeded, you will see that there's a large number of young people who are not able to succeed for all kinds of reasons, and the challenges are yours, and their challenges are those of the people who have the guts to get together and come before you and say, "We think we can make a difference. We have an idea," and we want you to really sincerely look at that. We're not trying to interlope, we're not here to create, uh, something based on anything more than the terrific desire to make a difference for the students who attend your high schools in, in the city of Erie. At this point, I just, I will touch one more thing because I always, I always get the questions about the professional development and then unique opportunities. This program, just by the very nature, is, it's built around a whole lot of special training that's going to have to go for our teachers, both in individualization and how to mentor, mentorship activities and process, uh, liberal arts designs, uh, the whole concept of the Huxley philosophies, and how does this, how does this adapt into an instructional program, especially since so much that we do, that you have to do, is mandated by the state, and how do we make it different so we get kids engaged, get kids buying into the fact that education is their way to a future that can provide them with the kinds of things that they need to be successful citizens and successful human beings? So I want to say that we have a lot of it built into our philosophy, uh, where we, we really believe we're going to give our, our teachers, uh, an unusual responsibility in working towards the success of this, their, their many mentees. So at this point, uh, rather than belabor any more of the application, uh, I'm sure that your attorney will have some questions today and many more next time, and you will too, I hope so, and we're certainly prepared to do as best we can to hopefully make you understand and, uh, uh, allow your fears in terms of, of what it is we're trying to accomplish. I thank you.
We appreciate your understanding of the time constraints we have, and as I said, and I assure you again, we won't limit or restrict your presentation in any way, and whenever we try to schedule that January, uh, reconvening of this hearing, we'll make sure that, uh, there's no such time constraints or nothing in the way, and you'll have plenty of time to elaborate as much as you feel comfortable. But for now, I'd like to, out of respect for the people that signed up, if we could squeeze in one or two, uh, public comments and then allow our solicitor his, his time, and then we're, as I said, going to request, I think it'd be, uh, we ought to respect the order in which the signers signed, or the, uh, citizens who desire to speak, signed the, uh, roster, so if we can shoot to have one or two or three of those people, and then, uh, but please understand that we have, uh, have to give our solicitor 15 minutes, and we're going to recess at 5:45. So, sir, would you state your name if you?
Yes, yes, sir. My name is Jim Ohrn, O-H-R-N. Uh, thank you, Mr. Harkins and the Board, for allowing me to speak today. Uh, I serve as Vice President of Custom Group, a group of three companies, two of which are in Erie and one in Wattsburg, PA. And, uh, just want to make a couple of points, uh, tonight. Uh, I've had the, the privilege of serving as a volunteer on the, um, Financial Advisory Committee of the School District, uh, for about the past three years, and, um, it's been an experience of, for me. Uh, again, I'm not an educational specialist, I'm a financial guy, but, um, we have had the chance, working with the administration, uh, to take a look at the details of your financial, um, distress at the time, and, um, my kudos to the entire Board and to the staff for really righting the ship over the past three years. We've gone from multimillion-dollar annual deficits to close to a break-even, uh, for the school year, or actually maybe a little bit better than break-even, uh, for the school year, ending in, um, June of 2014, while at the same time, over half the budget being state money is pretty flat, federal dollars are down, shrinking tax, tax base. So, given where you are, I applaud you. It's still a very tenuous situation, and this is a very important decision as we, as, as this charter school application is considered. We have, as you know, um, at the School District, cut many positions, uh, closed three schools, uh, while at the same time focusing on more and more career and technical education and custom engineering, has been happy to support career tech in the, in the welding and the machining areas over the past few years. Uh, currently, the school is paying out around a little over $15 million a year to pay for the existing charter school programs. Additional hits, um, to the, to the district would really be difficult for the budget to handle at this tenuous situation as we're facing, obviously, increasing costs in the district that we see, um, and, uh, would may require first, further cuts in personnel or closing of schools. Bottom line, the funding mechanism, uh, in this state for funding charter schools is a broken system, and I'm trying to work with, uh, with our committee and with politicians locally to try to resolve that. But I, I do appreciate, um, the decisions you have to make. Uh, I would ask that you consider it very carefully, and, uh, I, it, again, it's been a privilege to serve with Dr. Badams, uh, in this effort, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I, I failed to mention that generally our practice is to give two minutes to every speaker, and we'll try to squeeze one or two more in before our solicitor, but I should have mentioned that we tried to limit it to two minutes, and that worked out just about right, but I didn't get a chance to tell you ahead of time. So, thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Gamble. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Erie. I'm also a retired juvenile counselor from the Edmund Thomas Adolescence Center here in Erie. I'm currently a Community Resource Specialist with U.S. Probation, where I work with offenders returning home to the Erie community, and I also do some adjunct teaching at Gannon. I've known Al Messina over 50 years. He's an educator, a thinker, an intellectual, and an author. Uh, he's written a fine book on, uh, nonprofits and being a board member. This isn't something Al has developed overnight. He's been talking about it for over 10 years at least. I can remember 10 years ago, he was talking about the children at the Boys Club and how he wished he had, uh, we had a high school there that would be an alternative for those kids, and so keep that in mind. I think the Huxley School is a fine idea. It's one that's going to work. Al has met all his goals, both personally and professionally, and he'll do the same thing for those kids at that school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Mr. Rayner?
Dr. Rayner?
Dick Rayner.
Doc would like me to take his place.
Tina?
Tina Donikowski.
Well, I'll try, we'll allow one more speaker, and then we're going to give the solicitor his, uh, 15 minutes of fame.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tina Donikowski, and I reside at 4804 Wolf Road. I speak to you tonight as a mother, a lifelong Erie resident, and a board member of the Boys and Girls Club for over 15 years. I'm very proud of my association with the Boys and Girls Club, and I'm passionate about their mission. their mission. For over 100 years, the club has been a place, a place, where young people, most from disadvantaged circumstances, can develop into productive and caring citizens. We accomplish this mission with a very simple recipe. We take one caring adult, we add one at-risk child, and then we mix that together over multiple years in a structured, safe environment. This recipe will yield a Robert Gilmore or a Felicia Maddox, Felicia's here tonight, two club members who literally grew up in the club, were nurtured by caring adults, encouraged by club, teachers, and mentors to go to college, and today both are college grads, working full-time as counselors at the Boys and Girls Club. We have the recipe. We've proven that. This is why the Huxley Charter School is an extension of our mission. We've run successful preschool and after-school programs, and with the Huxley Charter, we can reach even more young people. The curriculum is designed to develop young people who can both think critically and are humane in their viewpoint. We will nurture their talent, their special talent, and provide the same mentorship and guidance that the Boys and Girls Club has done for over 100 years. We have the recipe. We're proven. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, we're going to allow the solicitor his time, and then we're going to recess the hearing at 5:45, so the solicitor, your, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Call Mr. Messina to the podium, please. Mr. Messina, you're the applicant contact person on page one of the application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you are, as you indicated, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club?
That's correct.
And you're an employee of that organization?
Yes.
And you receive a salary?
From the Boys and Girls Club, yes.
Okay. And the Boys and Girls Club is, as you indicated, a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
And you hired Dr. Harold Kurtz, is that correct?
Yes.
And he's a paid charter school consultant from Philadelphia?
I think that's accurate. You'll have to ask him. I'm pretty sure that's accurate.
Oh, he's a charter school consultant?
He is a charter school consultant.
And you're paying him?
Yes.
And he's not from Erie?
No, he's not from Erie.
He's from Philadelphia or Holland, Pennsylvania?
Yeah, he's from outside Philadelphia, sure.
Thank you. And how much are you paying him?
We're paying him his standard fee. Maybe he can comment on that.
Do you know how much you're paying him?
Offhand, no.
Is it $1,000, $10,000, $100, any range?
It, it, it's more than 100.
But you don't know how much it is?
I think it's 15,000.
Thank you. And who is paying him?
The Boys and Girls Club.
And where is the money coming from?
Where's the money coming from? It's coming from cash reserves that the club has.
And Dr. Kurtz helped you write this application, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're asserting this application is unique, is that right?
That's correct.
And in the application, you indicate on page two, I think it is, "Our ultimate goal is to produce self-respecting citizens who are positive contributors to their families, positive leaders in the, in their communities, and a positive impact on the world. We will set a new standard for excellence in all respects of public education that others will strive to achieve. Our educational approach will instill our students a thirst for knowledge that will serve them for their entire lives." Does that sound accurate?
If you're going to ask what's in the content of that application, I'm going to ask Dr. Kurtz to come up here. He wrote those words.
Well, sir, you're, you're the contact person.
I may be the contact person, but he wrote, he wrote those words, and he can answer.
Okay. I, you've answered the question. Dr. Kurtz wrote those words, isn't that correct?
He wrote the app...
Well, you can come back up to the podium.
Dr. Kurtz wrote that application, yes.
I'm sorry. I actually was reading from the Erie New Americans Friendship Academy Charter School application. Did you write that one?
No, I didn't, I didn't write that.
Is that language that's in your application too? That Dr. Kurtz wrote?
You'll have to ask Dr. Kurtz.
Well, I'm asking you. Why don't you come back up to the podium? You're not willing to come back up to the podium? Mr. Messina, I'm asking you to come to the podium and ask, answer the questions I have. You are the contact person, you are the applicant. You need to answer these questions.
Your question has been asked and answered. I answered it. Dr. Kurtz wrote our application, and if you have questions about that application, you can ask Dr. Kurtz.
All right. Now, did you participate in the Erie New Americans Friendship Academy Charter School application?
No.
And the language is exactly the same. Did you participate in the Erie Rise Academy Charter School application?
No, I didn't participate in those.
And the language is exactly the same.
Our application is different, fundamentally different than those two proposals, and fundamentally different, in fact radically different, in terms of the model. You're talking about two different things. If there's shared language, if there's shared language between the two, then, you know...
Between the three.
Between the three.
Yours, Erie Rise, Erie New Americans, it looks like...
I'm not going to speak to those applications. I have nothing to do with those.
What you're telling me is Dr. Kurtz wrote this, and it's a cut-and-paste application based on what Dr. Kurtz wrote?
It's not a cut-and-paste application. It's not, there are certain standard things. Dr. Kurtz addressed that in his introductory remarks. There are certain standard kinds of things that have to appear in all applications.
What is the common denominator in regard to Huxley Charter School, Erie Rise?
Well, maybe they have a common denominator.
Erie New American Charter School.
Maybe they have a common denominator, counselor.
You're not the common denominator, so it must be Dr. Kurtz.
Well, maybe they do have a common denominator. Maybe there is something similar about them.
Isn't it Dr. Kurtz, and he wrote the application?
Maybe there is something similar about them, and that's fine.
And so, you agree with me. Dr. Kurtz wrote this application, and this is Dr. Kurtz's application.
Listen, how many ti, listen, that's been asked and answered, counselor. I've told you that, that...
You agree with me or not?
Asked and answered, that's it.
My question is, do you...
Dr. Kurtz wrote the application.
Do you agree with me or not?
Do you agree with what? With what?
That Dr. Kurtz wrote all these applications.
I, I, I assume he's their, he's their, he's their, he's their consultant, so...
Thank you very much.
That doesn't mean he wrote them. I don't know. Maybe, maybe someone else wrote those applications.
In your application, in appendix eight, you attach a letter you wrote to Dr. Adams on September 9th, 2013, in which you indicate that you had plans to explore the charter school, and that you wanted to advise Dr. Adams about that, and you wanted to be cooperative and work with the school district. Do you recall that letter?
Yes, Dr. Kurtz drafted that letter. It's a pro forma letter that was sent to, to officially notify the, the district that we were moving forward with an application. That's my recollection of the letter.
You signed it, didn't you?
Yes.
And you indicated you're going to be cooperative, and you want to work for the school district, and you're exploring this opportunity, right?
Yeah. Well, that, that's what the letter says, yes.
Yeah, that's what it says. And then Dr. Adams responded to that letter, and he wrote you two letters, one October 14th, 2013, and one in November 5th, 2013. And in addition, he met with you, is that correct?
Yes, I met with Dr. Adams.
And you've received both those letters?
I have a letter from him here dated November 7th.
One in November, one in October?
I don't have the October letter in front of me. I have the November 7th letter in front of me.
In those letters, to Dr. Adams and in your meeting with Dr. Adams, did he indicate to you that the school districts of the city of Erie High Schools have 35,000, 3,500 empty seats, and that this charter school could have an adverse effect on the other high schools within the district?
I think that's in his original letter, yes.
Did you share that information with the board of the Boys and Girls Club prior to making the decision to move forward?
No, but they all received it, so he must have shared it with them.
Well, is there a reason you wouldn't share that information with your board?
Yes, because he already shared it with them.
Okay.
Okay. And in, in his second letter, he said, "After our conversation, I was convinced that you are sincerely interested in improving the future prospects of our children by expanding the mission of the Boys and Girls Club." That's Dr. Adams in his letter to me.
And in that letter, he shared with you that it could have an adverse effect on the existing high schools, that there are 3,500 empty seats in the existing high school. The school, the board of the Boys and Girls Club got that information, and despite that information, decided to move forward with this charter school and the building project at the Boys and Girls Club. Is that right?
I think you'd have to explain to me the full implication of 3,500 empty seats, because if you had empty seats, it would seem to me that you would make adjustments in your staffing, that you'd make adjustments in your facilities, so that you, you matched your resources with the number of kids you served. That's the assumption I would make.
My question to you, sir, is, this information was shared with you and your board, the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and despite that information, the board, the board decided to move forward on this charter school. Is that correct?
Well, I wouldn't say despite that information. We had a lot of information that we considered before we moved forward with this.
And that was one of those items of information?
Well, our analysis...
That's a simple yes or no question, Mr. Messina.
No, it's not yes or no, sir. It's not yes or, it's not yes or no. It's more complicated than that. And it's our understanding, it's our understanding, our analysis, that that 3,500 thing, it wasn't being handled maybe properly by the district. You make adjustments in your resources. You make adjustments in your staffing. You make adjustments in your facilities if you have 3,500 empty seats. It's a non-point.
Okay, so, well...
That's my answer.
And I appreciate that answer. So, what you're really telling the parents and students at Strom Vincent and Central Tech is that you really don't care about those schools. You don't care whether or not those schools will close, or potentially could close, and that it's more important for you to move forward with this charter school and build a new addition to the Boys and Girls Club.
We care about kids, sir. That's who we care about. That's my answer.
You care about kids, but you don't care about those kids?
We care about all kids, any, any, all kids.
So, the fact that one of those other schools may have to close, or, or things like that, that wasn't part of your concern?
Our concern is providing a creative alternative to kids in this community that they're not now getting. That's our concern.
And Dr. Adams, in his letters, advised you that the city of Erie taxpayers can't take on this additional burden of building another school. Didn't he advise you of that fact?
I don't know if he did or not.
You don't recall him telling you that, that there was an additional burden on taxpayers for this school?
Were their taxes raised?
That there's a possibility that taxes could be raised as a result...
Well, there's also a possibility it could be raised when you have deficit after deficit after deficit, which you, which you have.
Did you advise the, the Boys and Girls Club board that Dr. Adams told you that there could be an additional burden as a result of the building of this new school?
They received this letter. If it's in this letter, they received it.
And so, they received that information, and despite that information, again, they made the decision to move forward.
You're, you're making it sound like these are the reasons we move forward. We move forward for positive reasons. We have, we have an idea, we have a creative idea, and a creative alternative, and a creative model for kids, and, and that's, you know, it, it's the kinds of things Dr. Kurtz was talking about. That's our creative vision of this school. That's why we're moving forward.
Right. And...
Yes, that is right, sir.
As part of your application, in your budget, you indicate that you're going to pay site costs of $1,415,795. You're going to have equipment of, that you're going to purchase for this new school of You're going to have books and aids of $229,305. So, the total price for this new school, $2,101,100. So, in essence, what you're telling the taxpayers, who you think you're concerned about, you're telling the taxpayers that they're going to have to foot the bill in regard to improving the Boys and Girls Club to the tune of $2,101,000. Is that correct?
No, it's not correct.
So, that's not...
We're not asking the taxpayers to do that.
It's not in the budget?
Well, I'll let, I'll let Dr. Kurtz explain the budget.
No, I'm asking you, sir.
I don't care if you want to ask me. I'm deferring it to my consultant.
You are the applicant, sir, not the consultant. You are the member of this community. Are you concerned about taxpayers or not?
What?
I don't have to answer any of this badgering you, because we have a professional business manager. This is being paid off through the tuition that follows the kids. Over...
I'd prefer, actually, the answers come from someone from Erie as opposed to Philadelphia, but go ahead and answer the questions.
Such a rank...
That, that's, that's really, that, that's low. That's low. That's low.
Gentlemen, we need to move this along, and we...
I'd just like an answer to my question, Mr. President.
Please, please wrap this up as quickly as we can finish any other questions.
We don't think our, our school's going to have any adverse implications for the taxpayers of this community. That's my answer.
And so, the taxpayers will have to pay money for taxes, which goes to the school district, which is sent to the charter school to the tune of $2,101,000 to improve the Boys and Girls Club, even though there are existing schools, there are existing books, and there are existing equipment within the school, which will be used.
I don't think it's $2 million, I don't think it's $2 million to improve the Boys and Girls Club. That, 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 the, the, the capital improvements will come out of money that we raise, not taxpayers' money.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm looking at your budget. Your budget has site costs, it has equipment, it has books and aids.
Well, delineate the site costs. I don't have that in front of me.
Add all that up.
Delineate the site costs for me. Delineate what all those things are.
Excuse me, gentlemen. I can only take one person at a time.
Delineate the site costs for me, because there are multiple things in that line. You need to delineate them for me.
Is it in your budget? Is that amount in your budget? Yes?
You need to delineate what that is. You keep asking the question. I don't know what it is. I don't have it in front of me, but I think there are multiple things in that line that have nothing to do with renovations or any of that sort of thing. Our intent there is to renovate our facility with money that we have or we raise that has nothing to do with taxpayer money.
Isn't the charter school paying the Boys and Girls Club rent in regard to this facility? Isn't the charter school paying for equipment? Isn't the charter school paying for books and aids? Yes or no?
Yes, equipment, sure, and, and, and books, and rent, yes.
Okay. And that rent's going to the Boys and Girls Club to pay for the facility for which you're renovating?
It's not paying for renovations. It's paying rent, sir. It's rent.
And it's paying back...
It's rent.
It's paying back...
Rent is rent.
...the use of the facility.
Yes, we're leasing, we'll, we will lease the facility to the school.
Right.
Has nothing to do with taxpayer money, or costing the taxpayers.
Where does the charter school get its money?
Well, where do you get your money? You get your money from taxpayers too. It's the same thing.
So, you do get your money from taxes?
Well, well, when we get a student at our school, we will get a reimbursement for that student, just, you know, just like any other school does.
So, in essence, what you're telling the taxpayers of the city of Erie that it's too bad that we can't use our present schools, our present facilities, our present books, our present equipment, but we must use our taxpayer money in order to pay for a renovation to this private nonprofit...
Well, what we're saying is, your schools, in some respects, are failing, and we need creative alternatives. That's what we're saying.
By the way, does the Boys and Girls Club pay taxes?
Well, well, no, we're a nonprofit, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Senator, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap, wrap up your line of questioning. We're already five minutes beyond the 5:45.
At a board meeting, sir, of the Boys and Girls Club, did you tell your board that this charter school could be a method for which to generate additional revenue for the Boys and Girls Club?
No, false. Here's the question that was asked. We have been discussing this for like a year and a half. I've been privy to every meeting. I've been privy to every vote. In, in one instance, that I can recall, someone asked the question, or raised the question, do charter schools lose money? And the answer was that we believe charter schools tend to be financially solvent. Any responsible institution with board members that have a fiduciary responsibility are not going to entertain something like the creation of a school unless they have some idea that this can be financially solvent. You want to be financially solvent. When I met with your superintendent, he expressed to me the, that, that he was pleased that finally, the school district had a 300,000, I may not have the number correct, but something like a $300,000 fund balance. It's irresponsible to try to start, to start an entity that's going to lose money and, and go bankrupt. So, we have no intention of, we're, we're here, we're here to help kids, we're here with a creative alternative. The money part of this was never part of our discussions, and anybody who may have said that, even out of our organization, does not represent the point of view of, of the club, did not represent, our votes were all unanimous to move forward for the reasons that have been stated here tonight, having nothing to do with us being economic opportunists. That, 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 that really, that really, that really needs to stop. You need to stop characterizing us that way, and that's what you're trying to do right now, and it's really-
So you never said, I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear-
What?
That you never mentioned to your board that this charter school could generate additional revenue for the Boys and Girls Club. You never said it.
Well, no. No, that's, no.
You know, we have the power to subpoena your board members to attend here, so I want to make sure you're absolutely clear that that's what you said.
We're here, I've been there every meeting, I don't recall.
Dr. Rayner, you're not on the podium, one at a time.
No, we said bull crap.
Not to my knowledge. And even, and even if I did, it wouldn't matter. It, it has to generate revenue. Every, every, every entity you start has to generate revenue so it can operate. Our only concern was, and I'm telling you, sir, this is the real truth, not, not what you want it to be, not what you want me to say. The real truth is, our understanding was, we just wanted it to be solvent. That's it. We weren't out to make money. That's not what we're about.
Okay.
For the reasons we've stated, we must bring this to an end for the time being. We will not restrict or limit your ability to present at the, at a future hearing that we'll agree upon.
Well, wait a second, Mr. President. You let him go for a half hour, and you cut off people speaking out here. He, he was supposed to, you said in the beginning, he was going to go 15 minutes.
I let him have 23. You're right now.
23?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't do it intentionally, I kept thinking it was going in, but the back and forth, and you took a pause here and there. I, I'm not blaming anybody, but we've-
I took a pause.
For our reasons, we, we scheduled held and commenced public hearing, and now it's going to be recessed until a time that's comfortable for both parties.
We asked to have this meeting moved, okay? Let that reflect on the record, too. We asked to have this meeting moved so we could have a full hearing, instead of, instead of have two hearings and move this into January. We did, I did ask, I did ask counsel that. He said he would go back to the board. I assume he did.
What I said, Mr. President, is, based on the statute, the hearing must be held before December 31st. This was the opportune day for all board members to be present. We have to start the hearing before the end of the year, and this was the date.
I asked for an alternative date. I gave him the date. It was the 19th. He said he'd go back to the board. That's what he told me. And I assume he did that.
But we attempted to respond according to what the law requires, and this doesn't have to hurt the situation for either side. We, there should still be plenty of time to continue-
Well, it, it does delay.
Well, if we hadn't done this much, we wouldn't have, have anything commence. So, we've gotten this far, and I-
Yeah.
I respect everybody's opinion and point of view, but for our own reasons, we have to commence another meeting in five minutes, and that's what we'll do. So this, this is recessed until the month of January at a date when both parties can agree to comfortably come and continue the presentation. Recessed.
Welcome, everyone. We'll begin with the reading of the meeting notice. Ms. Smith?
The Board of School Directors of the School District of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, will hold a public hearing to consider the application of the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences in accordance with the Charter, Charter School Law, 24PS Section 17-1701A. On Wednesday, February 19th, 2014, in the auditorium at Strong Vincent High School, 1330 West A Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, at 5:30 PM, public comment will be accepted at the hearing by request of the President, John C. Harkins.
Roll call.
Ms. Shenley?
She's unable to be here.
Mr. Spiegel?
Here.
Mrs. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Here.
Mr. Casillo?
Here.
Mr. Fabrizi?
He's unable to be here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mrs. McNair?
Here.
Mr. Petrunger?
Here.
The purpose of the hearing, I first of all want to thank everybody for their patience and understanding. This is a continuation, as you know, of the hearing we began back in December, and with the crunch of another meeting, and the scheduling of the holidays, and the weather, and everything else, trying to accommodate everyone's schedules, it took us this long to get to this night, to have the full hearing that we never, we only began in December. And so, I thank everybody for their patience and understanding, and when it came down to tonight being the best night available, East High School wasn't available to us, and so, we switched venues for that reason. The School District of the City of Erie Charter School Hearing and the purpose and procedure for tonight's Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences Hearing, this is a charter school hearing for a charter school application submitted to the School District of the City of Erie. The General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania enacted the Charter School Law of Pennsylvania in June 1997. This law permits independent public schools established and operated under a charter from the local Board of School Directors in which students are enrolled or attend. A charter school must be organized as a public nonprofit corporation. Charters may not be granted to for-profit, profit entities. The Charter School Law was established to provide students and community members with the opportunity to establish and maintain schools that operate independently from the existing school district structure to accomplish the following goals. One, improve pupil learning. Second, increase learning opportunity through all pupils. Third, encourage the use of different and innovative teaching methods. Fourth, to create new professional opportunities for teachers, including the opportunity to be responsible for the learning program at the school site. Fifth, provide parents and pupils with expanded choices in the types of educational opportunities that are available within the public school system. And sixth, hold the public schools established under this act accountable for meeting measurable academic standards, and provide the school with a method to establish accountability systems. An applicant desiring to establish a charter school must submit to the local Board of School Directors the application by November 15th, 2013. If said charter school intends to operate in the 2014, 2015 school year. On or about November 13th, 2013, a charter school application was submitted to the School District of the City of Erie by the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences. Within 45 days of receipt of that application, the local Board of School Directors in which the proposed charter school is to be located, shall hold at least one public hearing on the provisions of the charter school application in accordance with the Sunshine Act. At least 45 days must transpire between the first public hearing and the final decision of the school board on the charter school application. But the final decision must not be later than 75 days after the first public hearing on the application. Now we'll move to the presentation by the applicant, the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences, Mr. Al Messina. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I want to begin today by noting that our charter school proposal, while it advances a new and unique model for high school education, addresses every relevant criterion fully and substantively that a charter school application is required to address. We address mission, measurable goals and objectives, curriculum, school calendar, and our approach to assessment in extracurricular activities. We have in our proposal parent complaint procedures, community involvement in the planning process, and governance structure. We have an admissions policy and a proposed faculty and professional development plan. We have also addressed criminal and child abuse checks, and suspension and expulsion procedures. We have addressed all 17 points required of a charter application, fully and completely, and we have included in it a model, a new paradigm, that is decidedly different and unique. And here's what I mean by a new paradigm. In 1962, the University of Chicago published a groundbreaking book called The Structure of Scientific Revolutions by Berkeley physicist Thomas Kuhn, a book that introduced into our lexicon the idea of the paradigm and its corollary, the paradigm shift. A paradigm for Thomas Kuhn is essentially a worldview in which certain assumptions are implicit in the paradigm, assumptions that invariably go unquestioned even as the paradigm breaks down and is no longer able to solve the kinds of problems it was set up to solve. Taking Pennsylvania's school performance profile as a standard measure, with 70 as a passing score, the Erie School District has only one of its four high schools with a score above 70. The other three schools have scores of 43, 48, and 49. The average score of the other 14 elementary and middle schools is 59. Think about that for a moment. 43, 48, 49, and 59 out of 100. Compare that to the highest-scoring elementary school, which happens to be a charter school, with a score of 89. One would expect, rather, one should expect, that as students move through the public system, that their scores would improve, but they don't. They actually decline. That's a paradigm that's failing. Those poor performances notwithstanding, it would be a mistake, in our view, to attribute that breakdown to a lack of dedication by the school board, to a lack of planning by the administration, to a lack of good teachers in the district, or to uninvolved parents or even passive and curious students. The public high school paradigm represented by the Erie School District has simply broken down, as the data clearly show, and it's now time for a new paradigm to emerge, one that elevates the role of teacher to something more than a credentialed professional, one that opens up the monopoly of mandated content to allow students to construct their own knowledge in an academic area of interest to them, one that integrates knowledge rather than fractures it into disparate disciplines, one that allows parents from all backgrounds to have a creative, educational alternative for their children. The public paradigm, then, is system-centered, not student-centered. It serves some select students well, a vast middle inadequately, and still others poorly. We can, we should, and we must do better than 43 out of 100. The life chances of the young people in our inner-city neighborhoods will depend on what we do to change the trajectory of their lives, what we do to set them on a path of lifelong curiosity and lifelong learning. These young people, some of whom we see every day at the Boys and Girls Club, are smart, they're talented, and one way or another, they will affect the destiny of our community. For it to be the right way, we'll need to listen to them, we'll need to nurture their interests and talents, and we'll need to mentor them in a way they have never been mentored before, in a way that builds secure attachments that are long-lasting and deep. To further illustrate the importance of secure attachments between Huxley students and their mentor teachers, and to draw the clearest possible contrast between the public paradigm and ours, I would offer this critical distinction from Philip Riley's book, Attachment Theory and the Teacher-Student Relationship. An important, quote, "An important issue to keep in mind when examining school relationships from an attachment perspective is the length of time each member of the dyad spends in contact with each other." Typically, teacher-student relationships in primary school last only for one year. Secondary students, on the other hand, are, are likely to interact with the same teacher over a number of years, but for much less time each week than they spend with their primary teachers. In both cases, the duration of contact may not be enough to meet the strict criteria for an attachment relationship, which takes approximately three years to fully form in both childhood and adult form. I have spent my entire career, almost four full decades, passionately trying to do just that for the young people who have passed through and will continue to pass through one of Erie's venerable social institutions, the Boys and Girls Club. We don't want the only choice for these young people to be schools that aren't making anywhere near a passing grade. The district's line is, we don't need another high school, but we think that's exactly what we do need, another good public high school, another choice, another way. The new paradigm that we're presenting in the form of the Huxley School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences represents an innovative and fundamentally different approach to public education for high school students in the City of Erie. It is a paradigm that redefines what a public school teacher is, what stance teachers ought to take toward the content of education, and what the relationship ought to be between students and teachers. It is a paradigm that privileges a constructivist approach to content over a prescriptive one, and an interdisciplinary approach to breadth of content over the aggregation of fractured knowledge. It is a paradigm that posits a partnership relationship between a school, the Huxley School, and a social institution, the Boys and Girls Club, based upon, for both institutions, the fundamental principles, fundamental principles of attachment and mastery. It is finally, and most importantly, a paradigm that posits a humanistic, rather than a mandated, data-driven, relentlessly quantifiable approach, one in which students, instead of the state, or a school district, or a curriculum committee, get to determine what they would like to study in depth. No public school in the City of Erie conducts itself in the kind of paradigm I've just described. In Thomas Kuhn's view, when a paradigm breaks down, what typically happens is that the practitioners, in this case, in the case of the public school, the teachers, are blamed for the breakdown rather than the paradigm itself. So we get charter advocates complaining that the system can't rid itself of what they believe are incompetent teachers because they're purportedly protected by a union. What these charter advocates really want is to privatize the profession, which would then enable them to hire and fire teachers at will based upon performance criteria. But we're not your average charter school privatizers. In fact, we're not privatizers at all. We believe that the Erie School District has fine teachers, but the way their profession is defined in the public school paradigm limits what they can accomplish with their students and what they can accomplish with their own intellectual development. In the Erie public schools, as in the public system in general, teachers are professionals who are credentialed to teach in a specific discipline. They are specialists, not generalists. Though the Huxley School will, as the law requires, hire teachers who are credentialed in their respective disciplines, we will also elevate our teachers' roles in ways that the public system does not, beginning with the philosophy that teaching ought to be an extension of the life of the mind, not just a profession, a job, a practice, but an art that has intrinsic as well as instrumental value. We will be hiring teachers, then, who can demonstrate, either in their academic record, their personal intellectual pursuits, or both, that they're living the life of the mind, or at least have the capacity or, and desire to do so. Teachers whose broad curiosity and breadth of academic background, both formal and informal, will enable them to connect their specialized disciplines to other disciplines across the spectrum of the Liberal Arts and Sciences, and in doing so, enable them to become generalists as well as specialists, enable them to, as the archaeologist and polymath Ian Morris advised, see the big picture. Morris, a featured speaker at the recent Jefferson Global Summit, wrote in his landmark book, Why the West Rules for Now, that, quote, "Those who stay within the boundaries of their own disciplines will never see the big picture." Jonathan Swift made a similar observation about his fictional Lilliputians, about whom he wrote, "They see with great exactitude but at no great distance." John Ralston Saul, an Oxford-educated Canadian intellectual and writer, put this point more polemically when he wrote that, "The more knowledge is limited to a single corner, the more ignorant the expert." the more ignorant the expert." Clearly, we will want and insist that our teachers and ultimately our students come out of Saul's single corner and Morris's limited perspective to see the big picture and to know, as Thomas Henry Huxley envisioned, as the Huxley model suggests, something about everything and everything about something. But to know something about everything will require a truly substantive approach to interdisciplinary study. Interdisciplinary connections implicit in a given academic subject, whether it is a social studies issue in a biology course, a math concept in a chemistry course, a point of political science in an English class, whether it's a single lesson or a project within a course, have some limited educational value, but it's not as sustained nor as substantive as an entire course devoted to an interdisciplinary inquiry. A course at the Huxley School, for example, that addresses Ian Morris's geopolitical question of why the West rules for now, will draw on multiple disciplines: biology, neuroscience, ancient history, archaeology, literature, sociology, economics, and geography, to name a few, to explain why the preeminence of the West is about to give way to another era of eastern preeminence in the global geopolitical world. Add to that the constructivist approach to this interdisciplinary course in which students are not only integrating content across a broad spectrum of the liberal arts and sciences, but are constructing their own knowledge around a question of global geopolitical significance, and you have a fundamentally different approach to interdisciplinary study. Finally, we will give our students the opportunity to work under one teacher-mentor during their entire stay at Huxley, thus transforming and elevating the role of teacher to include that of mentor. Instead of teaching dozens of different students one year and dozens of different students the next year and so on, as is the case in the public system, teachers teaching at the Huxley School will also teach one small group of students in a discipline the students themselves choose and which matches the discipline in which the mentor-teacher is credentialed, for as long as those students remain at Huxley, preferably all four years. In the context of Kuhn's theory of paradigms, any fair-minded and objective observer would at least agree that, when it comes to how one defines what teaching is and how teaching ought to be practiced, the public school paradigm and the Huxley School paradigm are fundamentally, if not radically, different. Staying with Kuhn's paradigm as a comparative framework, I'd like to contrast our concept of the content of education with the public's paradigm. One of the core assumptions of the public school paradigm is that there is a canon of prescribed mandated content codified in textbooks and common core standards. This idea of prescribing content, whether it is an idea in a book or textbook or a skill like critical thinking, is an old idea going back to classical antiquity, where philosophers like Plato and Socrates debated what kind of content the young should and should not be exposed to. A more modern approach would be that of E.D. Hirsch, who, writing in the nineteen eighties, argued for a canon of content based upon a concept of cultural literacy in which a prescriptive list of information that included five thousand essential names, phrases, dates, and concepts would become the possession of all Americans. A more modern, one could even say postmodern and therefore more polemical view comes from the essayist and novelist John Ralston Saul, who sees intellectual disciplines as constituting what he calls monopolies of fractured knowledge. The public school paradigm is indeed monopolistic in the sense that each discipline identified as a core subject, English, math, science, and social science, has its place, its purpose, its profession, guaranteed by the public paradigm in the form of agreed-upon content and standards. And the paradigm is fractured in the sense that all of the varied courses in the curriculum, however broad they are in their academic reach, are little more than an aggregation of disparate courses and disciplines. Even though some integration of content may occur within a discipline, and students can occasionally choose a paper topic or a project topic, there is no sustained integration of content across disciplines, nor is there any sustained opportunity for students to construct knowledge beyond what the state and the school district requires. What this kind of intellectual fragmentation means, in the view of historians and public intellectuals like Russell Jacoby, is that issues that loom large in one field are invisible in another. And what an overly prescriptive public paradigm means is that teachers are largely reduced to being disseminators of prescribed content while students are put in the passive position of receiving knowledge, instead of being in the engaged, assertive position of constructing their own. Which brings me to the most important contrast between your paradigm and ours, the view of students implicit in the public paradigm and the role they play in their education. In the public paradigm, students are passive players in a system driven by adult decision-making. They may get to choose, in a given core subject, one course over another, but they cannot, as students who will be able to do at a uniquely student-centered school like Huxley, choose a core subject to study in depth all four years. The Huxley students who choose English, for example, as their core subject, would take the required English courses that all other Huxley students would take, but they would take them all from their mentor-teacher. They would also take from their mentor-teacher an average of one interdisciplinary course a year for four years, which would establish connections to other disciplines across the spectrum of the liberal arts and sciences. Beyond that, students would identify a major subject within their core subject area to study in depth on an independent study basis, under the guidance and direction of their mentor-teacher, all four years, which would include but not be limited to readings, presentations, group projects, and the keeping of commonplace books. Taken together as a whole, these English courses, the core courses, the interdisciplinary courses, the guided independent study courses, would enable Huxley students to spend roughly forty percent of their school day engaged in subject matter of particular interest to them, thus providing a firm foundation for lifelong learning, a foundation for ultimately achieving the liberal arts ideal of living the life of the mind. So what is the paradigm shift we're offering in practical terms that says we're truly different, that we're truly unique? It's a year-round approach to learning and academic enrichment, to imparting to young people the notion of lifelong learning. We will accomplish this through a modestly longer school year, a hundred and ninety-two days instead of a hundred and eighty, a later start to the school day, an approach that has demonstrated improved academic performance for high school students, and extended learning through the entire summer based upon an IPP, Individual Performance Plan, for every Huxley student, a plan that requires them to do academic work in their major and in the interdisciplinary content related to their major, under the guidance of their mentor-teacher during the summer months. A student, for example, who chose English as her academic area of interest and theater as her major would have an IPP that included, among other things, reading Stephen Greenblatt's Will in the World: How Shakespeare Became Shakespeare, and watching live or on video selected Shakespeare plays, along with keeping a commonplace book, which is essentially a reading notebook, of quotes and ideas and impressions to be handed in at the beginning of the next school year for review, comment, and a grade from the student's mentor-teacher. All of this would take place over the summer. The student leaving the public school at the end of the school year will have no IPP, no formal plan, no mentor, no idea about what academic enrichment, of an academic Richmond plan for the summer. The Huxley student, by contrast, will have all of that. The scenario I've just described means that, unlike high school students in the district, every Huxley student will get to choose an academic area of interest and a major within their academic area of interest. Every Huxley student will have a teacher-mentor to study under for two periods a day, five days a week, thirty-eight weeks a year, as well as the entire summer for a long enough duration, three to four years, to establish a secure attachment. Every student will take an average of four interdisciplinary courses during their four years at Huxley, taught by their teacher-mentor. Every student will have an IPP that covers not only the school year but the summer months as well. Every student will have the opportunity in their interdisciplinary coursework and in their independent coursework in their major to construct their own knowledge. Every student will be evaluated in the interdisciplinary coursework and their major coursework on qualitative criteria, including but not limited to interest and engagement, grit and determination, and curiosity consistent with a commitment to lifelong learning. And finally, every Huxley student will have what amounts to an extended school day experience at the Boys and Girls Club, where they will have opportunities for homework assistance, tutoring, group clubs, community service, art classes, athletic teams, and intramural sports, every weekday from three PM to nine PM during the school year, and every weekday from nine AM to five PM during the summer. The public paradigm, then, which privileges fragmentation over integration, prescriptiveness over constructivism, quantifiability over qualitative considerations, and the dissemination of content over the establishment of secure attachments to teachers, does not, as the Huxley School does, posit a formative ideal based upon a liberal arts education, one that has the breadth and depth to overcome what the great liberal educator John Henry Newman called "narrowness of mind," one that rejects the notion that education ought to be essentially an exercise in test-taking and career preparation, one that rejects the Enlightenment assumption advocated by Descartes that numbers are the only test of certainty, one that the journalist Tanahisi Coats argues should set careerism aside and promote instead what he called "the formidable curiosity of every child." When the actor Tilda Swinton was asked why she chose acting as a career, she said, to her great credit, that she didn't set out to have a career, she set out to have a life. And that is what we believe every student who graduates from Huxley should be set on a path to do: have a life, a life of formidable curiosity, of active intellectual and civic engagement, a life full of personal courage and placable perseverance and humane purpose, a life even the wisest of the ancient Greeks would have said is worth living. Finally, I want to advance three principles that we believe ought to govern the remainder of this hearing and, to a larger extent, the process as a whole. First, we reserve the right, as you do, to representation. What I mean by that is we reserve the right to have whoever we want answer questions posed by you, the board, or your council. Second, when we get questions, as we did in the first hearing, that are not relevant to the charter application, we're going to say just that: it's not relevant. How much we paid our consultant, for example, is about as relevant as how much you pay your counsel and the firm he represents. Third, our expectation is that the exchange here today will be, unlike the last hearing, civil and respectful. That concludes my remarks. I'd like to turn things over to another member of our team, Dr. Harold Kurtz. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Senate, thanks for the opportunity here tonight to present the key elements of our charter application to you. The first hearing, unfortunately, was far too brief to share with you our overall plan for success. And I know it took an awful lot of doing to get this date resolved, but thankfully we're here, although I did note the snow flurries today and I kinda chuckled. I note that there are some new board members here tonight, so I'd like to briefly, just take a few moments, introduce myself. My name is Dr. Harold Kurtz. I'm a lifelong educator. I earned my doctorate from the University of Pennsylvania with a major in administration and minors in curriculum and writing and reading. I served in Philadelphia as a teacher and then was appointed a principal, a position I held for twelve years. Before I left to accept the position of superintendent of schools, I served as a superintendent in two districts, one urban, for a total of seventeen years, before I retired from the regular public education sector in the year 2000 and began my work in the charter school movement. I also have served as an adjunct professor at Drexel, Saint Joe's, and Temple Universities, primarily in the areas of administration and curriculum. In my capacity as a charter school consultant, I worked to help open over two dozen new schools. I also worked in Massachusetts, New Jersey, Ohio, and Washington, DC, in charter schools working on school assessment and improvement activities. I spent the last ten years working as an independent consultant and have personally prepared over twenty new applications in the state of Pennsylvania. These applications have led to the opening of twelve new charter schools, through them through the state appeals process, and four others which are presently in various stages of the appeal process. The key to the ultimate approval of an application is providing the school district with an application that meets or exceeds the requirements of charter law. I stand for you, and I'm going to state for the record, that the full body of work represented by this application submitted for the Huxley Charter School has been prepared to fulfill these requirements of the charter law. So you need to look at, and I would urge you to maintain, looking at this particular application specifically, does it meet the law or not? And I know that you understand that, but you also understand the underlying statement and why I feel necessary to say it. Having said all that, I want to state for the record that I am a professional and expect to be treated as such. I would urge council to ask whatever questions that are relevant and address the points of law. Typically, in these types of hearings, board members and administration ask the important questions of education, curriculum, facility, budget, et cetera. They represent the educational enterprise. Legal questions are the purview of council. In my opinion, the last hearing was embarrassing to you as it poorly represented the process. Statements made were insulting and demeaning and did not represent the high level of conduct one would expect in a public hearing. I know we can all do better. Our expectations are simple: we expect to be treated with respect, so that the nature of the hearing will allow us to try to clarify and inform the board and public as to our vision, mission, and extent of the proposed charter. In turn, we are committed to responding with respect and dignity. Huxley Charter School, as described so elegantly by its visionary and founding chairperson, Al Messina, provides an exciting option for the high school students who attend the Erie Public Schools. As I stated at the last hearing, Erie has one highly successful senior high school. The Northwest Collegiate Academy is one that all students, parents, school district staff and board, and indeed the entire community, should be proud of. No one denies the quality and the success of this special magnet program. Our concern is the fact that there are no options for the other high school students who do not meet the qualifying criteria for admittance to collegiate. Unfortunately, none of the other high schools have met state standards of achievement for many years. None even came close to meeting the seventy required by the state under the new school performance profile. This is simply wrong. As Al said, we must change the paradigm and create options not presently available for many students, all whom have potential to succeed. We must provide an opportunity for the transformation of the educational opportunities for these young men and women. In summary, how are we different? Our school moves to an institutional approach that provides instruction for a student, but to one that is student-centered, not subject-centered. The students will help identify their areas of interest, and the Huxley staff and their individually-assigned mentor will provide the guidance and support to enable the student to not only fulfill his or her requirements, but to center upon the area of interest as a part of the entire educational program. The key is the fact that all students will have a mentor assigned to them to ensure that they are able to achieve their educational goals. This does not happen in the Erie School District. We are planning for small class size with a maximum of twenty-five students per class. With creative rosters and our mentoring program, this number will often be much smaller. Our school day will start later, as the data shows that teens are more effective learners later in the day. As such, our first academic block will start at nine AM. It is important to note that our students will all have the requisite number of hours and courses needed for instruction, and in fact, by our extended school year, our students will have a minimum of three hundred additional hours above the required hours by the district and by the state. That's a substantial number of extra instructional moments. We are participating in a special partnership with the Boys and Girls Club in Erie. This will permit us to provide an after-school program with all types of activities, such as clubs, tutorial, academic support, arts and sports. Extended learning summer options will also be introduced. A key element of our school is its size. With a maximum of three hundred students by year three, we will be providing an environment of intimacy and strength. We hope that our success will provide a model for other schools, maybe even become a model for the Erie District, to use in its under- for the Erie District, to use in its underutilized facilities to create smaller learning communities for its high school program. Our budget meets the requirements of law. Our facilities will be first-class. Our school, our community support is clearly sustainable, and our program will provide a new and unique opportunity for the high school students in Erie. For these reasons and others, I urge you to consider the approval of the Huxley Charter School. We are now prepared to answer whatever questions you might have, and I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. So that concludes your presentation?
Yes, as per your agenda, we felt the most valuable time would be to answer your questions. You've, you've had two months to review it. I know your administration is busy at work and doing a lot of interpretation and so forth for you. And we basically have laid out to you what we believe are the significant points, so I'm sure there have a number of questions that you might want to raise for purposes of clarification.
Okay. For the sake of the public or for their information, the next step will be for the questions from the administration and board, and then we'll have public comment. So that's the order we'll go in. And the next phase then for tonight is the questions from the administration and/or the board. Mr. Bad, Dr. Badams or Mr. Senate, any questions? Mr. Senate?
I'll go first. Can, can you hear me out there? As you indicated, you are the charter school consultant for the Huxley Charter School. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and as you've previously testified, you're not from the Erie community but from outside of Philadelphia?
Not relevant, but true.
And you're a paid consultant here today as, in accordance with the previous testimony?
I am paid a fee to work with the community group in the design and submission and presentation of the application. That is my job.
As you testified, you have submitted or prepared 20 applications over the course of, of what, 10 years, as you indicated?
I said over 20, and that would be correct.
Okay. And that, would that include the Medical Academy Charter School?
Yes, and I'm starting to feel that what you're questioning, the road you're going on, is not relevant, so you better get to the point.
And would that also include the Erie Rise Leadership Academy Charter School?
Yes.
Would that also include the Erie Biosciences Charter School?
As you are well aware of, the answer is yes.
Right. The Erie Biosciences Charter School was drafted for a different community. Is that correct? It was drafted for the Mill Creek Township School District?
I'm going to say yes, and now I'm going to ask you, what is your point?
I'm not, I'm asking the questions, Dr. Kurtz, as you're aware. I'm just looking for answers.
Well, I'm not sure the answers are relevant to what this discussion tonight is all about. So I would like to know what your point is, please.
The relevance obviously will be determined by the board based on the questions I ask. I'll ask the question and see if you can just answer them. Thank you very much.
And I'll decide if they're relevant and if I will answer them.
Actually, I think the board of school directors will determine what's relevant and what's not.
And they should be asking the questions.
Okay. In regard, if I compared the Huxley Charter School application with Erie Biosciences Charter School application, one compared, one for the Erie School District and one for a different community, the Mill Creek School District, would I find that there was some commonality between the two applications, that there are whole sections that are basically the same?
I will repeat what I said earlier. The full body of work represented by this application has been prepared specifically for the Huxley Charter School, and as such, has been prepared to fulfill the requirements of charter law. Any other application I may have written is immaterial and not relevant to our discussion. Stick to this application, please.
So if we looked at the Bioscience Charter School and the Huxley Charter School, and we had them side by side and we compared the two, would you agree with me that if I looked at that, the table of contents is, is the same in Huxley as it is in the Biosciences? That the English Arts Curriculum Summary is found on page 15 in Huxley, and the same information is found on page six of Bioscience? That the Art Integration Summary is found on page 15, and the same summary is found on page seven? The Science Summary on page 16 is found on the same pages in the Bioscience application on pages eight and nine? The Social Studies Summary is found on page 16 of Huxley, and the same information is found on page 13 of the Bioscience? The Math Curriculum Summary is found on page 16 of the Huxley Charter, and the math summary is, the same thing, is found in Biosciences page 12? The Science Summary is found on page 16 in Huxley, and the same summary is found in the Biosciences on page 12? The Social Studies Summary is found on page 16, and the same summary is found on page 12 of the Biosciences? The Course Listings are found on page 18, and the same course listings are found on page 12 of the Biosciences? The Extracurricular Activities are found on page 53 of the Huxley, and the same extracurricular activities, same wording, identical, page 50 of the Biosciences? The Huxley Board of Directors duties are found in the Huxley application on pages 67 through 69, and the same duties are found in the Biosciences Academy Charter School on pages 62 through 63? Contained within the application itself is an exhibit called Required Core Subjects, and that same exhibit is found both in Biosciences and Huxley identically, including this, this, the stack of books that are on the front cover. So do you agree with me, sir, that if I'm looking at Bioscience and Huxley, I'm looking at a lot of the same stuff?
A, it's irrelevant to this process tonight. B, I'll repeat, the full body of work represented by this application has been prepared specifically for the Huxley Charter School in order to prepare to meet the requirements and fulfill the requirements of charter law. Anything else is irrelevant, and I hope you didn't pay him a lot of money to do all that research.
So you don't dispute the fact that it is the same in Biosciences and as in Huxley?
I've just said it's not relevant. It has no place in this hearing, and you know it.
I know you're saying...
Only thing you're trying to do is create a, a, a perception that I, and I've heard you say it, or I've heard it read, that we're peddling the same Fitch one all over the state. It's not true. It's simply not true. It's okay that you see similarities. That's all right, too. It's not relevant. What's relevant is what you have on pages one to 101 in this application as it addresses charter school requirement laws for an application. That's what you're to look at. If it doesn't meet that, then you have a right to say it doesn't meet that. What has been said elsewhere is not relevant, and I, I think you need to stop this questioning because it's not relevant, it's inappropriate, and I will not respond anymore to any other questions along this line. Have I made myself clear?
Mr. Harkins?
Yes, Dr. Badams?
I believe, Dr. Kurtz, that you and Mr. Messina have applied for a charter from this board.
Yes, we have.
And the means to do that is a very thick application, approximately four to five inches thick, I think. To suggest that it's meaningless, that, that doesn't matter what it says, to me is an insult to everybody in this room and in this community.
Excuse me, I never said it was meaningless. I said his questions are meaningless.
Let me rephrase that, that his questions about what is in that five-inch document you've termed irrelevant, the fact that he has found similarities, not similarities...
That's the point that's irrelevant, Dr. Badams. It doesn't matter. There are certain templates, there are certain things that are in every application in everyone that's submitted in this state, and he knows that. It's not relevant. What is relevant is what you have before you, and every bit of that's important. And I don't, and we stand behind that. We want you to review it and give us your, your, and render a decision on that.
Sure. So are you, are you then, so let's just confine the question then to the application you've submitted on the part of the Huxley School.
Thank you. That's all we're asking.
And the vision, just very eloquently articulated by Mr. Messina. Is it your contention that the application that you have prepared and submitted to this board reflects the vision just articulated by Mr. Messina? Is that your contention?
Yes.
Then my assertion is that every other application that you've submitted in this community and elsewhere is now relevant.
You're wrong. It's not relevant.
Well, then, then I would say that our attorneys, our solicitor's line of questioning will determine the veracity of the claim you just made about the application and Mr. Messina's vision.
Mr. Messina's vision is clear. The information we put in there that describes the program, the information we put in there that describes the courses of study, the information we put in there that describes the school and its operation, this is all very relevant and very important and supports the vision. Some of the material in there is, by its very nature, boilerplate because it needs to be. It's written by attorneys who, who design certain aspects and responses to questions of the law, and that's how this is done statewide. And we believe that this application represents a total package that needs to be reviewed when you look at the Huxley Charter School. If you find that wanting, then you'll write, you'll write that in your, 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 your letter when you, you finally get to the final vote. And then we'll, we'll sit down with our attorneys and we'll analyze that, and we'll make a decision where we go from there. This is not what the nature of this hearing is supposed to be about. You're supposed to ask us questions specifically to the question of what's in this binder. And it does not matter if there's similar language anywhere in this state because that's not relevant to this hearing. And if you don't, and I'm not trying to minimize or trivialize what your role is, or, or even his role, except he's going down a path that he knows, starting out, has only one purpose, and that's just to, to rob this organization, when I say this organization, the Huxley Group, of its credibility, and it's a very credible group of folks, and I'm a very experienced and expert consultant. I know what I'm doing. I'm not peddling this stuff.
Dr. Badams, I, I'll move on to something else. I think he's answered the question sufficiently. He's indicated there are similarities. I think he's answered the question.
Thank you for, for saying that.
I do have another question, obviously, in regard to the application. And if you look at page 80 of the application, you indicate there in regard to your recruitment efforts, that a special challenge to us in our recruitment effort centers around the fact that most of the parents we are reaching out to have little or no command of the English language, which requires us to do much in, of the recruitments on a one-to-one effort. So you're going to recruit a selected area of, of students on, on page 80, and they're not going to be English-language speakers. Is that correct?
No, this school is open to all children who apply. We just want to be prepared to work with any parent who might have an issue in, in trying to complete the process. If a school without qualification is open to everybody, everybody meaning everybody with no criteria.
Is that, sir, if you look at page 80 of your application, is that app, in your application or am I dreaming?
All it's indicating is we know that there's a large population in this community who are foreign-language speakers, and if they need help in completing this process, we're aware of it and we will help them. That's all.
Did I read that correctly, sir?
If you read it word by word, yes.
Thank you. And, and was that the same sentence that you had in the New Americans application?
I'm not going to answer that.
Dr. Kurtz?
Page.
Dr. Kurtz, you asked for a fair and reasonable hearing, and we're trying to do that. I just, you seem a little defensive. Back in December, we were rushed, and I apologize if it created an atmosphere where there was tension, but we don't have that here tonight, and...
Oh, yes, we do.
Well, I mean, I don't...
And I apologize, Mr. Harkins, because I don't mean this aimed at you. I just want to be clear of something. He has a job to do, but he's not the prosecutor and I'm not a criminal.
No, no.
And he handles himself as if he were the prosecutor, and that anything that we have to say needs to be attacked from a prosecutorial, prosecutorial manner in order to find us guilty of something. Yes, of course, he knows the answer to that, like every good lawyer. He knows that was also in the New Americans, but it's just as relevant here because, I'll repeat again, everything in here is a part of the process that we want you to consider for this application.
But so are his questions, and I would just ask you not to judge the relevancy of each question as it's presented to you.
Mr. Harkins, I'm having trouble hearing you, sir.
I would just respectfully ask you, Dr. Kurtz, if you would just...
I will try.
...refrain, refrain from assuming and judging that each question that the solicitor says is irrelevant.
Okay, I'll try that, and I'll try to do it your way, but I've stood before him at least a dozen times, and his behavior and conduct towards me each time becomes more acrimonious. And I'm just allowing you to understand that I am sensitive to that, but I'm also sensitive to your needs, and I will try to maintain that.
Okay.
Okay, but there are times, I'm going to tell you right now, if I feel he's stepping over, I'm going to tell you that, because I'm, I am a consultant. I flew up here from Florida to be here. I didn't charge him extra to be here. I'm here. I expect to be treated appropriately and respectfully.
But if he's asking you reasonable questions in a reasonable tone of voice, don't...
But he's going back to the issue that we already determined was irrelevant before, that whatever was written someplace else didn't matter.
But, but Dr. Kurtz, you know, you may have repeated in your presentation things that we heard before. That was your right, and it's his right to ask whatever question he thinks is relative. And so far, I haven't heard anything that's out of bounds from either side, so could, could you just please?
I told you I'm gonna...
I'm asking you, just respectfully.
Mr. Harkins, I promise to try.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Kurtz. Attorney, Senate?
On page 59 of your application, you reference that you're going to recruit students from the Zone. Is that correct?
I'm not finding that language, but I will say this, that we know that most of the students who will be applying, and most of the students are in the other three high schools, are represented by living in that area. I don't, I don't see that specific reference, however.
If you're going to recruit students who have no command of the English language in your, in Appendix C, you indicate that your ELL teacher is only going to be a 0.6 teacher. Is that sufficient? What is a 0.6 teacher?
It's a part-time, three-day-a-week teacher. And depending on the results of the home language survey, depending on the process of identification, depending on the needs required, we may increase that as, as needed. And that's a typical way of, of developing your budget.
All right. So if you do have a significant number of, of non-English-language students, then you have to change the budget, increase the, the teachers...
We would do that, yes.
All right.
Mr. Harkins?
Dr. Badams?
I'm sorry, I, I don't think that the, the previous question was answered. I believe that in the application, on that page, it makes reference to recruiting students from the Zone in quotation marks. I'd like to know exactly what Zone we're talking about. It's in quote, it's in quotes, so I'm assuming...
Yeah, and, and that's, that's how I've always heard it referred to. And the Zone, and I, I won't give you the boundaries, there's those in here who could tell you better, it's a, a large section of, of the city where probably the poorest people reside in the community, a large number of them, and they are also where some of your worst-performing schools are. And, and that's an area we expect fully that many of our, our students will, will want to come to our school from. So we will have, obviously, although we're open to everybody, our full expectation is many kids from the Zone, the Zone. And you probably know the Zone better than I do. I only, I've rode through it many times. I heard the term five years ago when I first came to this community, or four years, four years ago, but I couldn't give you the actual...
Well, okay, well, good, I did, I heard that then, too, and that's what struck me when I read all five inches of the application, because it was a reference to the Zone from a previous charter school application for the Erie Rise. That was whole predicated, the whole unique facet of that particular school was that it was going to cater and concentrate social services in a place called the Zone, modeled after the Harlem Children's Zone.
Yeah.
That's what caught my eye when I read that, so I was wondering if that was...
And, and we felt it appropriate to indicate that, again, we'll be looking at students from that area and anticipate quite a few.
So, so was this application a collaborative effort with Mr. Myers and the Erie Rise program?
No, he wasn't even aware of it.
Okay. Are you going to create a Zone for your...
No, we're not creating a Zone. The Zone exists.
On page 48 through 50, there's numerous references to No Child Left Behind, Stand On pages 48 through 50, there's numerous references to No Child Left Behind standards. Are those still applicable today?
No. And we indicated in the application that they have just been waived by the state of Pennsylvania, and that they're using the new school profile, performance profile, and a whole new formula in terms of how they're going to determine achievement. And I believe we have broken that down earlier in the application.
So those references on?
That's on page four, where we break it down and we indicate that, and we provide you the process by which we'll be able to do the assessment of growth for our students.
Those references that No School Left Behind are not accurate at this point, correct?
AYP itself, we all know, is eliminated.
Pages 48 through 50.
Yeah, I have it in front of me. I'm just. If you start on page 48, you see, furthermore, the waiver eliminates adequate yearly progress and replaces it with an improved accountability system. And then it goes on to describe that system. AYP, for all intents and purposes, is a historical mark as far as it concerns, based on the fact that for the years, No Child Left Behind were implemented to this school year, that, in fact, they didn't release AYP for last year, they released the school performance profiles. And this indicates that.
It also indicates, the Huxley Charter School for the Liberal Arts and Sciences is committed to compliance with the No Child Left Behind legislation, and will make focus on four annual measurable objectives in recognition and intervention of the title, schools, those which high percentage of low-income children. Indicates that you're going to comply with the No Child Left Behind standards.
Yeah, No Child Left Behind is still valid. It's just that they changed the assessment system, and this clearly states that.
And throughout the rest of the page, it references the No Child Left Behind standards on page 49. Is that correct?
Want a quick read standing here, yeah. We've stated our targets and the process that's required under the new system, and how we're going to track that through the progress made of our students.
The teachers that you're going to hire, you indicate that there will be six academic teachers. Can you tell me what the qualifications of those teachers will be?
Well, we understand that the law says that we can get by with 75%. Our goal will be 100%. We're going to be looking for teachers who are fully certified in the necessary academic areas to teach high school subject matter. And we have absolutely no expectation that that is going to be a problem.
So that I understand, and everybody understands, you have six teachers. Is one going to be certified in math, one going to be certified in English? What are the qualifications for the teachers?
The qualifications will meet the state qualifications of certification. They'll be certified in the state of Pennsylvania to teach. How we're going to break that down will be determined after we have our students enrolled, and then make a decision how we're going to schedule and roster these students. It may end up that we were thinking some would be one and a half English, and it would be maybe one and a half math, depending on what we have to teach. Sometimes we can get teachers that are certified in one area, and they can split the sub, because we're only going to have 150 students. That's not a lot of students to serve. So that decision on the final alignment of those folks will be made as we get closer to the point of discussing, okay, we're getting ready to open, we're completing our enrollment, now let's see what kind of teachers we're going to need in terms of subject matter, because we're going to have to bring in some people to start developing the kind of rostering necessary to begin to implement our program.
But this is an important point in regard to your plan that you've advocated here, because you're indicating that the students are going to pick majors. So you clearly need a certified teacher for each area of study.
That we will have.
So you'll need a certified teacher for social studies. You'll need one for math. You'll need one for science.
Yes.
You'll need one for?
English.
English. You'll need one, what other majors are there? Those are the only four.
Those are the four majors that they're required.
So there's four teachers. And some of those teachers, I mean, what are the qualifications for these folks? I think that's important.
I think I told you they're going to have to be certified in their subject matter.
Do they have?
We're also going to be looking for a certain kind of teacher, as Mr. Messina said, somebody who has some experience and a track record, who has the mindset and the willingness to do the kinds of things that we're looking to achieve with our students. Bottom line still goes to the fact that our teachers will be certified in their subject area that we're hiring them in to teach. That's a requirement.
I'm sorry. Will they have any qualifications over and above certification?
No. Nothing specific. I mean, we know what we're looking for. Mr. Messina described those kind of people. That's going to take some due diligence on our part to find the right people. I can only tell you when we opened up a couple of high schools a couple of years ago, we applied, we advertised, we went to the state REAP system, and advertised for academic positions, and we've got, in most areas, 20 to 30 applicants for each position. Our biggest problem then became, how do we winnow through it and bring that down to a sizable group so we can begin the interview process and begin to follow up due diligence required? So, yes, they'll be in the four basic areas, and then from there, we're going to make some decisions, what else we're going to need, because we're not quite sure exactly what we're going to need. That's why we provided for six in the budget. It may turn out that we need six and a half. Whatever it is, we're going to adjust the budget accordingly.
In the application, you indicate six teachers at the present time.
Yes, and that's what we have at the present time.
If you turn to page 84 of your application, in regard to class size, I'm a little confused. Under paragraph B, targeted staff size and teacher-student ratio, you indicate the student-teacher ratio shall be no more than 25 to 1, but you indicate that you plan to enroll no more than 20 students per class.
Our basic ratio, six teachers to 150 kids, is where we got to 25 to 1. That statement about 20 per class is more likely going to be, after we do the rostering, what the class size will be. But that should not have been made as a definitive statement as such.
So that's incorrect, the 20 per class.
The language should have been made a little bit less definitive. It should have been said, and we plan to go for 20 to a class for most instruction. That's not a finite number. It's something that we're shooting for, a small class size. But we're allowing for a 25 to 1 ratio in basic teacher hiring.
And you're identifying your classes as 75 students per class.
Per grade.
Per grade.
Yes.
Six teachers, 25 students per class.
Yeah. As Al's pointing out to me, and I didn't want to raise it at this point, but we do have additional teachers on staff, music and art and special ed and so forth, reading support. So we have other teachers who will be there pulling off from that 25 to bring our class size down. Also, when our mentors are working with the students, based on the scheduling, the class size, again, our goal is to try to keep the size as small as possible in order to maintain high level of teacher-student engagement.
But based on your schedule, based on your budget, based on the statement that's in this document on page 84, your class size is 25 to 1?
Our ratio is 25 to 1, not our class size. It's a student-teacher ratio. There's a difference between ratio and class size.
Next year, you plan on nine teachers and 225 students. That would result in a 25 to 1 class size.
25 to 1 student-staff ratio. Class sizes can be modified by how you roster those students. High school rosters are not like an elementary roster where kids are self-contained. High school rosters are departmentalized, and kids move around in smaller groups, and that is the significant difference. So in this particular case, staff ratio is different than class size.
So you really don't know what your class sizes are. All we know is?
We're setting a goal, trying to keep it to around 20. That's what we're saying here. That's all we're saying. And it may come out to be 21, it may come out to be 18. Some classes could be 15, some could be 22. We don't know that till we actually do the rostering. But the basic class size goal is 20 students per teacher in an instructional setting.
Which is no smaller than the same thing as the school district of the city area.
We believe that when we get done with the mentoring piece, which is critical to what we're doing, that is so uniquely different that the class sizes will be even more dropped. We don't know that till we started, but we believe it's going to be closer to a lower ratio.
Again, I'm just talking about this application here. You indicate that one of the unique features of this school is you're going to have smaller class size.
Yes.
And really, you're not, are you?
We believe we are.
Okay.
If you have.
You believe you are at 20 to 25?
No. We believe that in most cases, there'll be 20 or less. And perhaps I should have put that language in there, and maybe that would have satisfied you. I apologize for not doing that. But that is our intention.
World languages. On page 17 of the application, you indicate that you're going to teach world languages. But when I look at the application itself, the only world language that's in the application, that's in the syllabus, that's in the course summary information, is Spanish. Is that the only world language you're going to teach?
In the first year, that would be our expectation, yes.
Right. In the first year, you indicate you're going to teach Spanish both in the ninth and 10th grade on pages 12 and 13. But in your budget in Appendix C, there is no Spanish teacher.
That is correct, and that is an error. But we will amend our budget to show a Spanish teacher.
And on page 53 and 54, you indicate that you're going to have extracurricular activities, and that you're going to charge enrollment fees. Do you know what those enrollment fees will be, and what are you going to charge for?
At this point, it's never been our expectation to charge any fees. In fact, we have in a budget a line item to cover student activities that would cover any potential fees. So that probably should be, and I apologize again, you're going to say I did a bad job, and I did. The word "and fees" should probably not be there, because there's no expectation that we'll be charging fees. The only time you generally do that, if you're doing some kind of extended out-of-school activity where the kids are taking a trip someplace significant, and the parents help pay for part of that. But in our general activities after school, since it's going to be the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, there'll be no fee structure whatsoever. Kids are invited, encouraged, and no fees will be charged, including for the summer activities.
So in regard to your teaching methods, on page 30, you indicate your teaching methods will be that there is a teacher-directed instruction, there'll be activities, and it'll be an inquiry-based instruction. Is that correct?
To some degree, yes.
On page 15, you indicate that art will be integrated. I'll read it directly. The arts will not be a separate curriculum at our school, but rather, it will be integrated where possible across the content areas. Is that correct?
It says "where possible," yes.
All right. I'm, again, confused, sir. On pages 12 and 13, you indicate that you are going to have separate art classes. On Appendix A, you have course titles, Art 1, Art 2, and Arts for 9th, 10th, and 11th grade. You indicate you're going to have an art teacher in the first year of Point 4. So are we integrating art, or are we teaching art separately?
You integrate it by when you teach your art. If, for example, the social studies teacher comes to the art teacher and says, we're doing a unit this month on this period of history, and the art teacher would, at that point, collaborate with that history teacher, and in the art class, begin to have the kids study the art of that period, maybe replicate some of the art of that period, and that would become an integrated thing because they're tying in. They could even do a research project as part of it, and that's where the social studies gets integrated across the line. But this could be the kind of integration we're talking about. Now, if there's a kid who wants to be an artist, and this is his goal of life, we're going to be finding mentors for that. It would be, and as we grow, we'll be adding more arts staff as needed.
Music. You indicate you're going to have music in the 9th grade on pages 12 and 13. It's also in Appendix A and Appendix C. However, the budget does not contain a music teacher.
That is correct. That is correct.
So that's wrong, too?
Again, that will be corrected in a, and I don't know what kind of timeline we're going to have, but we would just submit to you if you'll accept it, a modified budget indicating those few changes.
On page 16, excuse me, on page 11, you make a reference that this school is going to follow universal standards. And on page 56, you indicate the teachers are going to have fully-developed lesson plans. Can you tell me what these universal standards are? And are you pre-purchasing fully-developed lesson plans?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question, Mr. Senate.
Again, I'm working from your application. On page 11, you indicate the students will be taught based on universal standards. And then on page 56, you indicate the teachers will teach from fully-developed lesson plans. The impression that we have is that you're going to use universal standards and fully-developed lesson plans that are already done, already completed, and that you're going to submit those and use those. Is that correct?
Much of the teacher time that we have built into our ongoing professional development will be to the teachers working together in order to help design much of the actual instructional program. They will obviously base it on the required standards, and that they will then prepare the actual lessons. Some of it will be based, I am certain, because this is typical, that some of it will emanate from the kinds of text materials and other kinds of resources available. But we also know that there is a huge, huge curriculum base that's out there online that we can draw upon. And what they are, are lesson plans and programs developed by other teachers who have implemented these, and our people will work together to look at some of these, and to go to them, and to modify them where they feel it would be appropriate. So what we're looking to is allow the teachers a certain amount of flexibility, and I think Mr. Messina mentioned it more than once, some level of flexibility to be able to help develop and work the curriculum, just so they keep in mind that there are certain required standards that the students must be exposed to, because all. required standards that the students must be exposed to because ultimately, especially in certain subject matter, they're going to be taking state tests which they have to pass. And that, of course, are the keystones. So it's a combination.
So you are going to use fully-developed lesson plans? Is that correct?
Sometimes, and other times, we're going to develop them ourselves. That's the key to our flexibility. And when we say we're going to use what's out there, if I'm a teacher and I'm going to be teaching a unit and I go online to one of dozens of the existing websites out there that have been developed by curriculum teams around the country, and I see there's a lesson plan on that same subject that has been utilized in a high school in New York, I might pull that down and I might look at that and say, "Okay, now how can I modify this? And how can I utilize this to provide for my students an excellent instructional program?" That is not prefab. That's taking something and building and adjusting it and modifying it. And that's what we want our teachers to be able to do. They need to have that kind of control, except they also have to be aware, and we'll hold them to that, is whether or not they're staying and preparing our kids to meet the established state standards or common core in English and math.
Page ninety, your application indicates that you're going to use a dress code. What is it?
I think that one of the things that we're going to be doing once we get approved is that we're going to sit down and determine what an appropriate dress code would be for our students. It may very well be a uniform. It may very well be some type of common acceptance of what the appropriate garb would be for a student attending Huxley Charter. Most charter schools use uniforms. In fact, many public schools use uniforms. That's a decision that will ultimately be made based on the administration and the Board of Trustees coming to a conclusion how to do that. But there will be some type of dress code, yes.
Just don't know what it is at this point?
Well, we don't have to know what it is at this time, other than to say we're going to have one.
Technology. You indicate on page two that technology is important and that each student will carry their own laptop. So Huxley is going to purchase a laptop for every student in the school?
Ultimately, that is our goal, and we even have that pretty much covered in our budget, where we have a substantial amount of money in there for student technology. We're thirty thousand year one, forty in year two. And by the time we're to our senior class, seventy-five thousand, we're also going to try to use the generosity of our partners and other people to maximize the kind of technology we believe that every student in every grade, in every middle and high school, not just Huxley, should have. But yes, the short answer is yes, and we've responded to that in our budget.
So if you don't have it on the first day of school, it would be a violation of the charter?
No, it's not. That's not as simple as that.
Sure it is.
No, 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 no. We're going to-
Are you indicating that you're going to have a hundred and fifty laptop computers for every student in the school at the time of beginning of the school?
It will be our goal to order them and get them on-site and ready. And if they come the second day, you won't find us in violation. I mean, an intent to act and do it is what really matters. You're going, if you come to us during the summer and visit us and say, "How you doing? Where's your order for your technology?" You'll see them ordered. But whether they're there on day one or not is, you know, sometimes they don't deliver on time. Vendors can be a little slow, but it's our goal.
Your school day, on page thirty-one, you indicate that the academic, there's a morning meeting between eight-thirty and nine, but your academic schedule doesn't start until nine o'clock. Is that what I heard today?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And your dismissal time is three-thirty?
That is also correct.
Right. So the academic period of time is only from nine to three-thirty, not including lunch recess and not including class-changing schedules time? Correct?
That would give us a six-and-a-half hour day, less the half hour for lunch, and there's always a couple minutes for passing.
All right, so am I correct what I just said?
Yeah.
Okay. You indicate that there will be student activities from one-thirty to three-thirty. And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you that. You're actually doing early dismissal on Fridays at one-thirty. Is that correct? So your academic time on Fridays is nine o'clock to one-thirty in the afternoon?
What it says is students will be placed in various activities and clubs at this time. It could be extended, it could be extended mentoring, it could be tutorial, it could be any number of things based on the needs and desires of the kids. But the teachers then will be doing their weekly professional development.
I'm sorry, I confused you and I'm sorry about that. I asked two questions at once. My first question is, is your academic time for Fridays, nine AM to one-thirty every day?
Yes.
And the second thing then is your student activities are one-thirty to three-thirty on Friday?
Yes, and my answer to that is yes, except those activities are going to be pretty much, to a large extent, determined by two things. One, by what is seen to be the need of the student by the mentor or by the student or staff. Or it could be some other activities where the student chooses to do something additional if indeed that's his desire or her desire. But that will not be wasted time, especially if it's used. Normally, that is used as a mentor time anyhow, and we suspect that many of our students will be involved in mentoring activities. And some of that's independent as well.
In your application, you indicate during that period of time, the teachers, the academic teachers, are going to use that period of time for planning.
That's correct.
So, because you indicate in your application that there's additional eighty hours of planning, and that would be that Friday afternoon time from one-thirty to three-thirty.
Correct.
So the teachers are off planning and we have activities from one-thirty to three-thirty.
Right.
Who is, who are monitoring the students from one-thirty to three-thirty?
There are additional staff that will be on board, some of the part-time staff that are not doing the academics. There also will be a host of volunteers who are part of our mentoring program. There'll be the administration that will be there to provide oversight. We're not concerned that that will be a problem of supervision. We will provide supervision, we will plan for it. It's not like the hundred and fifty kids will have the ability just to roam around in the building.
On page eighty-four of your application, you indicate that the administrators must be sufficiently knowledgeable in at least one academic area to meet the requirements outlined for the teaching staff. Can you tell me what you mean by the administrators must be sufficiently knowledgeable in at least one academic area?
Yeah, what we're looking for, and first of all, anytime you want to start a new school, you need to find an experienced administrator. And if you're looking to open a high school, secondary school, you need to find somebody with a secondary background. Almost every secondary administrator will come to you with an academic area of expertise. He or she was a teacher of English, he or she was a teacher of social studies or science. And that, we're going to look for that because we feel having an academic background will be a plus for them and for us in terms of having to do the rostering and seeing the picture of how we're trying to create this special entity.
And one of those administrators will be the executive director and slash principal, is that correct?
See how we have it listed. The first year, we're planning on the CEO also being the academic leader for a hundred and fifty kids. It's kind of overkill to have two people doing that. So that CEO will be a principal person, and there'll be a vice-principal who will be responsible for administrative services, who will, in effect, take care of a lot of the organizational part of the day to make sure things fit and work, as well as take on some of the responsibility of leadership. Ultimately, we're going to, at some point, where we're going to be putting in an additional part-time administrator in year two to serve and coordinate student activities. But at the beginning, that person will wear, in every charter school, the start of charter schools, every administrator wears more than one hat. They have to because the school's too small, the budgets are way too tight for us to be able to go out. And frankly, if we were to hire too many administrators, I think we're wasting our money in the administrative end. We need to spend our money on the instructional end.
Who is the executive director-principal for the charter school?
We have no executive director. We have no, we have selected nobody. Here, nobody exists. At this point, if you told me to name one employee for the school, I would tell you none. We have none in mind, we don't know anybody. We, obviously, we're not about, ready to go out there and develop job descriptions and start a search. But we will, when we get approved, we will absolutely go out there and do a legitimate search for these positions.
So Mr. Messina would not be the executive director-
Oh, God, no, no. It was never his intention to be an employee of this school, ever.
And the salary for the executive director-principal will be ninety thousand dollars to monitor a hundred and fifty students?
Yeah, and that's pretty, that person's paying, getting paid minimal money for a lot of work because it's not just a hundred and fifty students, it's a hundred and fifty high school students while they're trying to create a brand-new school. And if you look at your own salary scale for your administrators, that probably doesn't pay for a vice-principal at the high school. I may be wrong, but I suspect your scale is much nicer than what we have here for the administration. That is a very modest fee with a high level of expectations for a twelve-month-a-year employee trying to create a new school and run it and operate it.
In order, under your admission policy on page eighty-two, you indicate the students have to attend one general information session, then they have to be interviewed by the staff. The staff will interview the students in order to reinforce the mission. And then only after they're interviewed by the staff will you give them an application packet to become a possible applicant to the school? Is that correct?
They wouldn't be a possible, nobody would be rejected. The point is that we feel-
My question, sir, is all that correct?
Pretty much, and that's, by the way, a system that most charter schools in the state of Pennsylvania uses. It's a perfectly legal, appropriate way to invite parents in, to present the school to them, answer their questions, hand them a packet and say, "Please fill this out." And we hope they do. We will reject no one.
The school calendar on page thirty is, the school begins September second and ends June thirteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's what it says.
And you indicate that, and you indicated earlier that results in a three hundred additional hours of school?
Well, it's an additional, I believe it's an additional ten hours, ten days of, typically you have a hundred and eighty-two, we're going for a hundred and ninety-two. That's typical, ten more days of instruction. So-
And three hundred additional hours of instruction is what you just said? You said it in the application, you said it here today?
Yeah. And I hope my math is correct because if not, you're going to cite me on that one too.
One of the major components of the charter school is that, and you've indicated today, is that the students will pick a major. Is that correct?
A major areas of interest that-
They're picking a major. They're going to pick math.
And it won't necessarily be one of the things that is listed as a, as an academic major. Could be almost anything. It could be a career major, it could be, a kid wants to be an architect or an astronaut, he's interested in aerospace. So that would be, we would be building in the sciences and all the stuff for him through the mentorship, but that would be his area of major interest, which would be kind of developed, a lot of instructional purpose would be developed around that through projects, through research, through activities, and all the other things that happens with the mentor-teacher.
Your application doesn't say that. Your application says that you're going to pick a major. And your application indicates, gives examples for math, science, social studies, and English. Now, are you indicating that there will be other majors such as architecture, such as to be an astronaut? Those are majors also?
I think you're misreading what we said there. What we said there, what we meant there, our intention as outlined to you by Mr. Messina is that we want a student to raise an area of interest, something that he or she really wants to learn about. Now, in most cases, it's going to be able to be fit into an academic area. If a kid's a history nut in his history area, he cares about the Renaissance beyond who knows why, and that would be his area. Obviously, that's an area in history. We don't teach Renaissance in the high school but for one short period of instruction in our regular instructional program. But he would have a lot more studies in the area of the Renaissance, both through its history, art, literature, and any other things that may be a part of that big picture, that big period called the Renaissance. In most cases, it will fit under an academic area, but it's, I guess we could say the same for aeronautics or for architecture. But we're just allowing for a child to come, our student, to come in there and say, "I really have an interest in it, just doesn't really fit as snugly," you know? And we still don't want to deny that student that area. So we'll find a way of providing the kind of mentorship and the kind of support academically to get it done. Obviously, it's a flexible system.
Just so I'm clear, so I'm a student, I'm walking into that school as a ninth-grade student, and I want to be an architect.
Good.
You're going to provide a major that deals with architecture.
We are going to provide you with all the information, working with people who, from the architecture fields, volunteers, as well as doing studies related to architecture, related to engineering, related to design. That would be an area of your major. Now, we don't see anything in there listed, architecture. But obviously, when you start talking about architecture, you're talking about the areas of science, you're talking about the areas of mathematics, you're talking about the area of, when they get into architecture or mathematics, it's all there. But which one is it? Is it a chameleon that doesn't know where to land? Or is it something you try to build the program around that specific area of interest and you're drawing from all of the academic areas?
But that's not what the application says, sir. The application says that you're going to pick a major, and the major, so what you're telling me, and you only gave me four examples, but now you've given me a fifth. Now we have an architecture. So if I want to be an architect, you're going to have an architecture major. If I want to be a lawyer, are you going to have a lawyer major?
We'll probably try to talk him out of it, but-
As you should.
I couldn't help that, I'm sorry.
As you should.
I apologize. But having said that, if he's interested in the law, in the legal systems and jurisprudence, then he's going to, we're going to have him, through his studies, through reading, through literature, through history, through all kinds of ways, he's going to spend a great deal of his time learning about the legal system jurisprudence.
Same thing for a doctor. You're going to have a doctor major.
Yeah, and the point is that we're going to provide for that kid. That's what makes us different. I don't know why you're having, that's what we've said all along.
Just trying to understand all the things that you say you're going to provide.
We are going to provide it, and you can hold us to that.
Don't worry.
I hope you do, seriously. Because if we're able to make that happen, we're going to have three hundred of the most deliriously happy kids and parents. And maybe, as we suggested, maybe we'll give you a model to work with for some of your kids. Because you have to be as frustrated as we are by the fact that so many of your kids are not succeeding.
And what you're saying, Dr. Kurtz, is this application, the information that's in this application supports what you just said?
Absolutely. We've been saying that all along.
Okay. So if I want to understand the architecture major, it's in here. If I want to understand the legal major, it's in here. If I want to understand the medical major, it's in here.
What we are saying, based on your intent, what your area of interest is, we're going to provide the mentoring and educational support to make that happen. We do say that. And it may be an interpretive way of looking at it. Maybe you're interpreting it as a black and white because we couldn't list architect, boom, 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 boom. We could have, I guess. But the bottom line is, that's what we're saying we're going to do. Otherwise, we are no different.
So, and I'm looking at what you've provided us.
And we're saying-
I'll be able to find it in here.
We're saying for the record, and we'll say it one more time, and Mr. Messina has already said it, that's what you- already said it, that's what's so unique about our school, is that we will be able to provide for the specific interests of each and every student who enrolls in our school.
So the answer is yes. Is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Are you finished?
In your summaries of curriculum, you indicate that you're going to follow the Common Core curriculum. On page 11, you indicate the curriculum will be built on the Common Core curriculum. On page 35, you indicate the teacher accountability says the teacher shall be committed to the Common Core curriculum. On page 36, you indicate that the teachers will undergo Common Core curriculum training. On page 56, you indicate you're choosing the Common Core curriculum. On page 83, you indicate the professional staff will be committed to teaching the Common Core curriculum. On page 85, you indicate there will be intensive and ongoing training in regard to the Common Core curriculum. I'm, again, fairly confused. I don't know that a Common Core curriculum exists. What is the Common Core curriculum that you're following? Because I don't believe it does exist in the world.
It does. The Common Core has been approved in English and in mathematics for the state of Pennsylvania. We've also indicated that the state, and you, and Dr. Adams can tell you that, they're in the process of taking the state's present Pennsylvania standards, and they're adopting them over and adapting them to the Common Core in social studies, and I believe, science. They're not yet ready to raw 'em out, but they're in the process. In the next two years, they're supposed to happen. As these, as each of these areas of general instruction are rolled over, we will be adopting the new state Common Core standards. In the meantime-
Common Core standards?
Yeah.
Not Common Core curriculum. There's no such thing as a Common Core curriculum. There are Common Core standards, right?
We mean the Common Core standards, of course. When we talk about-
Well, Common Core standard, a Common Core standard is not a curriculum. Do you agree with that?
The Common Core standards, every, every textbook provider who wants to sell a textbook in English and in mathematics in the state of Pennsylvania has been smart enough to look at the Common Core standards and to revise those books. And each one will say a line to the Pennsylvania Common Core standards in English, language arts, that were aligned to-
Dr. Kurtz, I hate to interrupt, but you didn't answer my question.
I'm answering it.
Is there a difference between the Common Core standards and a Common Core curriculum?
Yeah, there's a, that's totally different. The Common Core-
So when you said-
There's a Common Core knowledge, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the Common Core standards that have been adopted.
You're talking about Common Core standards, right. And when you say Common Core curriculum, there is no Common Core curriculum.
Mr. Harkins, can I interject? May I interject? I just wanted to interject, because now we have a third element entered here. The core knowledge was a curriculum by E.D. Hirsch.
Yeah, it's a different-
That's something completely different.
We're not mentioning that.
The Common Core state standards are the standards that we've been, we're assuming are being referenced here. However, there's also reference to a Common Core curriculum, which we in the district have learned through extensive training through our GE Developing Futures Grant, doesn't exist and is a popular misconception. There is no such thing as the common, as a Common Core curriculum.
It's the standards that are established in the instruction of all the various subjects presently in English and in math. And that's what we are referring to.
And that's not what you said.
Well, that's what we're referring to. I'm glad you asked for clarification, because that's exactly what we're referring to.
Okay. And we've talked about this already. On pages, the front page of the document, on page 11, you talk about the chosen major discipline, the chosen major discipline, and we had a long discussion about that.
Mm-hmm.
But, and in, on page one, and again on page nine, you indicate that by the completion of the senior year, Huxley students will achieve a mastery in a major commensurate to that of a college graduate, and will be armed with the necessary skills to continue their education or to consider a potential career path. And on, that was on page nine. And then on page one, you say the same thing. All Huxley students will select an academic area of concentration from one or more basic disciplines, English, math, science, or social studies, which you've changed a little bit tonight, and then a major within that discipline. The process will begin in the freshman year and continue for four years in independent study, leading to mastery in their major commensurate to that of a college graduate. So when a student picks his major and completes four years of education at the Huxley Charter School, that person will have an education commensurate with a college graduate in that area. Is that what you said?
That's how we envision it. And we did say, as I said, architecture would fit in under this area, but we would fit it within the academics. So we're not, we're just have an interpretive issue there. But the reality is, we believe with four years of specialized study in an area, that our kids will be, and that's our vision. That is what our goal is. That's what we expect that will happen, that if we do what we plan to do, that they would have that kind of knowledge base in their area. Doesn't mean because they studied with us the area of architecture that they're ready to go out and take their tests to become an architect, they're still gonna have to go to college. But we believe-
Well, you're asserting that their level of knowledge, it will be equal to a college graduate in that area. So if that's the case, then, based on this application, I should be able to find the appropriate math, science, social studies, and English curriculum that would result in that student having the same knowledge as a college graduate at the end of the four years. Is that correct?
No, that's not what we're saying. They're going to have a full academic program, as identified in our framework on pages 12 and 13, of all the academic areas, which will be-
That's not what you said, sir. That's not what you said.
What we're saying in that one-
You're saying that he will be, have a mastery in the major commensurate with that of a college graduate. So if we're gonna be a college graduate at the end of the four years, then, I would submit to you that in this application, based on the summary of the curriculum, you need to provide us a curriculum that would result in a college graduate-level education at the end of the four years. Is it in this application?
You are reading into it incorrectly. We are saying that the students who spend four years of intense study of an area will come out with a mastery, what we hope to be and what we envision to be, a mastery, understanding, and knowledge of that particular area of interest. That does not mean, that does not mean he's a college graduate, nor does it mean that he's eligible to immediately take the state boards for that area of interest. All it means is, he is gonna come out of there with such a solid, or she is gonna come out with a solid understanding and depth of knowledge and feeling and whatever for that area, that, that would, we believe that could equate to what a college graduate might know going through four years of college. That's all. That's what we're saying. We're not saying we're gonna give him a college degree. And therefore, we're not trying to provide, what we're providing, though, is for every one of these kids, most of who are failing now, an opportunity at the end of four years, we hope, that be qualified to enter a college, and to have a desire to go further at their education, because they became so engaged in the process, they started to believe education had an end for them, a process that, once they engaged in it, they could become something different and something special, and they could be, they could live their lives, as Mr. Messina stated.
That's not what you said, sir. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Dr. Adams?
Thanks, Mr. Harkins. I have less questions than commentary, and I'd like to have the administration have an opportunity to address the application. I just wanna reiterate the point I tried to make earlier, and that is that we take this application very seriously. This decision on the part of the Boys and Girls Club to further an application to start a high school is very, a very serious one. And because the Boys and Girls Club has been such a great partner of the Erie School District over the years, and because it does such outstanding work with our youth, likewise, it deserves serious consideration. And that's also one of the reasons why this whole process has caused me distress. I have no doubt whatsoever of the wonderful work that is done by the Boys and Girls Club. And I think in their, with their particular mission, they've proven themselves throughout the nation to be the best opportunity for underprivileged youth. I can't say enough about the Boys and Girls Club. Running a high school is also a serious matter. Running any school is difficult, but running a high school is extremely difficult. And the questions that Mr. Senate has asked may seem picky to some people, but the day-to-day operation of a high school is full of all sorts of details. It's not something that we just decide that this is our aspiration, and therefore, we're going to start a high school and serve 250, 300 students, many of whom come to school with a wide variety of needs well beyond academics. My assumption is that the Boys and Girls Club, Huxley Charter School, would serve students who are living in poverty, that they'll serve students who have disabilities, that they'll serve students who are English-language learners, that it will serve students who are involved with gang activity, who may be using drugs or alcohol, may have had some interaction with the juvenile justice system, just like many of the students that we serve in the rest of our public schools. All of these things are very important considerations, and they require details. They require people to serve them. I do want to at least briefly address this notion of the school performance profiles, which is, this is the first year that they've been introduced. It's a completely new metric and new benchmark that's not even complete yet. When it's fully implemented, there's an entire heavily-weighted area that will show and recognize the movement that our teachers make when they have a student who actually sees a significant learning gain that, while not on grade level, moves them from where they began to a level commensurate with a year of top-notch instruction, or will find that we haven't met that benchmark. Those things aren't even in the, in the calculation yet. I also think that the characterization of our schools is failing, is, echoes what many, I think, who don't truly understand urban education have said and parroted for years and years. Our staff, I'm sure, was insulted by that. And our district in particular does a great job when compared to similar urban school districts. And again, we are perhaps trapped in this paradigm that we're in right now, but let me turn to the application on that note. It's interesting that there are numerous references to the Common Core curriculum, which, again, I will grant is a incorrect term, that really means the Common Core state standards, or in our case, the PA Core. But this seems to be a conflict within this application, and it's something that we've noted, is that while, on the one hand, we're talking about our liberal arts education, and we're talking about students being able to pursue their interests, and to have mentors who are going to help them to pursue their interests, we certainly can't ignore the existing paradigm. We certainly can't ignore the Common Core, and therefore, it's laced throughout the application. To me, that's going, that's going to be one fundamental challenge for this school, if it were to start, is how are we going to reconcile that existence and that unavoidable existence of that paradigm? Charter schools, as Mr. Kurtz has pointed out at other hearings, are public schools. They are held to the same standards and measured by the same metrics that our schools are measured by. So with regard to declaring majors and spending significant amounts of time pursuing students' own interests, while certainly a laudable goal, those same students will be taking a Keystone Biology exam. So if their interest is poetry, and they're working with a mentor from the rather small staff to focus on poetry, it sure better not be the detriment of their biology score, because the class of 2017 will be required to pass that biology class, or that biology test, in order to graduate. Again, so the underlying paradigm and the, the sort of disconnect between the language that attests to the structure of the curriculum around the Common Core state standards and this notion that students are gonna be, in an almost Montessori-like fashion, pursuing their individual interests, is a delicate balance. I referenced earlier the thickness of the, of the application. I can't give you a page number, because they're separate sections, and they're not all, they're not all sequentially numbered. But it is pretty much a five-inch-thick document. And I just want everyone to understand here that, that there are numerous discrepancies, there are numerous occasions throughout the document that are problematic, that have caused us to question them. But we did read that. We read the entire application, and the folks who work in the district, who have responsibility for various areas within the application, devoted significant time to studying it. In fact, we've monitored how many hours, because this is getting to be a challenge for us in the district, that we have numerous charter applications, and it does require us to give them due diligence. And in this particular application's case, we've spent 385 hours among our staff. And that's over 10 staff in different areas who've devoted as many as 70 hours to this process. Figuring the various salaries of those individuals, that has amounted to about $20,487 in time. And I will promise everyone in the room that these estimates are conservative. We are forced to review these legally as well, and have incurred $11,000 in legal fees to review the legality of the application and to prepare for the various hearings. So this is, we take this extremely seriously. So for the assertion to be made that the application is boilerplate, that's problematic to me as well. There are, there's a mission, vision, and goals in the application, and I would, I guess, just ask the rhetorical questions, since, because I don't expect an answer. Our mission, vision, and goals for this school that has, you know, at least at the podium, such a beautiful vision behind it, are those stated mission, vision, and goals boilerplate? Because when I read the ultimate goal in bold of this charter school application, I was shocked, because I saw bold caps, the ultimate goal of the Huxley Charter School. Coincidentally, is the ultimate goal of every other charter application we've reviewed as a board, including Erie Rise, including the New Americans Friendship Charter School Academy, this one as well. The same ultimate goal. When I read the reference to the Zone in quotation marks, I cross-referenced it with Erie Rise's charter school application. That's where the Zone is defined, because I wasn't sure what the Zone was. But the Zone is referenced in the Huxley application. And it goes on from there, and I won't belabor that point, but please understand that devoting over $30,000 to analysis of this application and giving it fair consideration is very difficult. When we're handed an application that states the mission, vision, goals, curriculum, all of the operational requirements, the budget, and I can find the exact language, the boilerplate, in all of these other applications. The disconnect between the two paradigms is not thoroughly developed in this application. It's wonderfully articulated here, but in this official document, this legal document, it isn't. The notion of declaring a major is clearly stated in this application, so I researched that. I couldn't find anywhere in literature an endorsement of high school majors as being in any way supported in any academic research, as being a way to increase student achievement. Now, that may be because it's uncharted territory and it's a new paradigm. But according to the American Association for Colleges and Universities, which is also cited in the application, they, their spokesperson calls the declaration of high school majors, and this is a direct quote, "a colossally bad idea." So, again, I apologize, that's why I asked the question, does- So, again, I apologize, that's why I asked the question, does this application actually represent the vision articulated at the initial presentation? My assessment of the application so far is that they're quite in conflict, and in fact, within the application, there are so many contradictions as to make it almost impossible to figure out what the true purpose and implementation of the program will be. So, again, there, we have, I want to give honor to the people who have done the analysis here and allow them to address the board as well if I could.
Yes.
So, I think Attorney Senate, you have a few folks to call.
I have the list. Ina Fisher? Ina, could you pull the mic over by you some?
Certainly. Is it okay?
Make sure that people can hear you.
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you state your full name, please?
Ina Fisher.
And your position?
I work for the Erie School District. I'm an administrator, I work in central administration, part of the superintendent's executive leadership team.
Right. And a little bit about your background?
Been in it over 30 years. Started as a classroom teacher way back when it was twin tax, so quite a long time, Mr. Brzezinski might remember. Then became a principal and worked in director of K-8 in downtown, then became associated with the grant, went back to curriculum and instruction, and now work in central administration.
Thank you. Have you had the opportunity to analyze the school calendar as part of the application?
Yes, I have.
And the school calendar, I mean the Huxley Charter School application's school calendar?
Yes, I have.
And did you determine what their school year was?
Yes, I, according to the application, they state their calendar on pages 30 and 31.
And what do they state?
On page 30, they state that classes will begin the first Tuesday after Labor Day, and the first day of school for students will be Wednesday, September 2nd, 2014, and the last day of school will be Friday, June 13th.
All right. And did you match it up with the calendar itself?
Yes, I did. The first Tuesday after Labor Day is actually Tuesday, September 2nd, Wednesday, as indicated in the application, is September 3rd. The last day of school would more likely be Friday, June 12th, not June 13th, as June 13th is a Saturday.
And based on your review, did they indicate the number of days of instruction that they were going to attend?
Yes, they indicate that this will provide 192 days of instruction if there are no snow days. So looking at that, if the school year ended on Saturday, June 13th, that would be 185 days of instruction. If it ended, as more likely would, on Friday, June 12th, that would be 184 days of instruction. And in order to go 192 days, they would have to go to June 24th, 2015.
All right, so the indication of the school calendar and the number of days of instruction is incorrect as set forth in their application?
That would be correct, correct.
And do they, obviously they indicate in page 31 they're going to follow the holidays of the Erie School District, and you factored that into?
Yes, I actually, we are just approving our 2014, 2015 school calendar, but they do list the actual days that they will be off, so I did take that into account.
Did you also analyze the application in regard to the hours of instruction?
Yes. The application says that the school day will begin at 8:30 a.m. and end at 3:30 on Monday through Thursday. Fridays, there will be an early dismissal at 1:30.
But we heard tonight that the actual instruction time doesn't start till 9 o'clock.
Right. I'm just going with what was indicated on page 31 as to the school day, as called out on the school day.
And is lunch period count in regard to instructional time?
No, no. According to the state regulations, instructional time, lunch period cannot be counted, nor can passing time. But the application doesn't seem to indicate the amount of time for passing class to class.
And did you also recognize that their school day would be from 8:30 to 1:30 on Friday?
Correct. So assuming that classes begin at 8:30, that would provide for 6.5 hours Monday through Thursday and four and a half hours on Friday, including the lunch period. I'm sorry, not including the lunch period.
But also including that period of time from 8:30 to 9 o'clock?
Correct. That would actually include, six and a half hours would include, that would assume the instruction begins at 8:30.
Right. And again, tonight it said 9 o'clock.
Correct.
So that would change your calculation.
That is correct.
So based on that analysis, did you determine how many hours of instruction are being provided by the Huxley Charter School, based on the calendar they provide and all the information they've provided?
Yes, I did. So I used the calendar that was provided in the application, and beginning September, which, September through June, so using the dates that they actually identified in the application, it would be 1,115.5 hours for the year.
And could you tell me how many hours of instruction the students at the school district of the city of Erie go through?
So currently, our calendar begins in August and goes through June. We provide 1,176.5 hours, so their calendar would indicate 61 fewer hours.
But their application indicated they were going to provide 300 additional instructional hours more than the school district of the city of Erie.
That is correct. On page 31, it says one of their unique features is that they will provide students with nearly 300 additional instructional hours per year as compared to other local school districts. 300 additional hours at that same six and a half hours per day would equal 46 additional school days, probably taking the calendar almost to mid-August.
So in order to achieve what they assert they're going to try to achieve, their kids would have to go to school until mid-August?
Correct.
And so the representations they're making in this application are not correct?
That is also correct.
They also indicate in the application that they're going to have additional teacher in-service time, and I think they indicate 80 additional hours or eight full days. Did you analyze that?
Yes. Again, on page 31, that is identified as their unique schedule. This is one of their significant benefits, that the early student dismissal time on Fridays will provide our teachers with two hours of uninterrupted collaboration and planning time per week, equating to, as you said, 80 hours or eight full days. We believe that this collaboration time is essential to our mission. So if they use the start and end dates as indicated in their application, that would provide for 37 Fridays, including the last day of school, which let's say is June 12th, that actually would be 74 hours, not 80 hours.
So again, their representation in their application is incorrect.
That is correct.
After-school activities, they indicate they're going to have after-school activities from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., and then also on Friday from 1:30 to 3:30. Under present Department of Education regulations, does after-school activities during those periods of time count?
No. According to State Board of Education regs, Chapter 11, Section 11.2, a school day is defined, instruction time for pupils, as time in the school day, in the school day, devoted to instruction and instructional activities, provided as an integral part of the school program under the direction of certified school employees. So the after-school programs would not count in the instructional time.
Because the certified teachers were supposed to be over in planning, and they're not with the students during that period of time, as Dr. Kurtz indicated?
Correct. Nor is it part of the integral school day.
Class credits. Did you analyze class credits that are represented within the curriculum summaries?
In the appendix, I believe Appendix A, it indicates that there would be 270 instructional hours for the core classes, so your math, English, social studies, and science, within an instructional week. Using the same six and a half hours Monday through Thursday and the four and a half hours on Friday, it would actually take 54 weeks to complete that, but there's only 52 weeks in a year.
And that would require them to go year-round?
Correct.
And this is a-
And even beyond that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, no.
This isn't a year-round school?
Not according to the application and the start and end dates.
So the hours of instruction based on the credits are not correct as set forth in their application either?
That is correct.
Overall, did you find some of the key elements that they assert or represent as being key to this school? Are they accurate?
No, no. Not at all accurate. It was really pulling it apart, looking at our current calendar, looking at calendars that we've used, and I've been on the calendar committee for the school district for about 10 years, so I'm pretty familiar with how calendar works. It does not add up.
Do you have anything else to report in regard to your analysis?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Could you state your name, please?
Cheryl Rush-Dix.
And your position?
I am the Science Coordinator for the City of Erie.
And could you give us a little background about yourself?
I'm a science educator who brings laboratory, engineering, teaching, administrative, and team leadership experience to program development, program management, and evaluation. I've earned degrees and certifications in both science and education. And while serving as the Science Coordinator for Erie Schools, I've also worked on the state and national levels in science education, as faculty, committee members, or presenters for the Smithsonian Science Education Center and the University of Pittsburgh. In Pennsylvania, I've served on the Science Assessment Committee and as part of the group called the Pennsylvania Distinguished Educators. I've been selected to present on several National Science Teachers Association conferences.
And Cheryl, have you had the opportunity to take a look at the summary, and I won't call it a curriculum, but the summaries that are in the application in regard to science?
I have.
And did you look at the framework that is set forth on page 12 of that application in regard to science?
I did, and I found contradictions of concern.
And tell us what those concerns are.
Well, in the liberal arts framework on page 12, we find that there is a science sequence of courses outlined that begin with physical science, biology, then chemistry, and physics in grades 12, nine through 12 respectively. In later sections of the document, including the required core subject section, the sequence is completely different. It begins with biology, then chemistry, then physics, and then anatomy and physiology in the grades nine through 12.
So the course structure doesn't match up?
Within the document itself, it does not agree with itself.
So we're not clear as to what courses they're actually going to offer? What about the content areas themselves?
In the description of the science program, the description includes a list of science process skills that will be the focus, however, the content is not delineated in terms of big ideas and concepts.
And why is that important?
When one considers what the content is to be and a sequence of science, you need to consider the big ideas and the sequence of the concepts that should build.
So we should find that in here if it's a valid curriculum?
Right.
And it's not there?
It is not there.
There's a reference, I think, on page 16 also to laboratory experiments. Did that raise a concern for you?
It did because there is another contradiction in the document overall, whereas in some places you find quotes such as, "Some of our courses will use laboratory experiments to reinforce concepts," but in another section, quite pointedly states that labs, our courses in science will emphasize the inquiry method of learning. If it were to do that, using labs to reinforce concepts contradicts the inquiry-based method, which will use lab explorations throughout the learning process to build understanding and not just confirm facts.
So basically, as I understand it, and I'm not an educator, two different theories going on here-
Yes.
-within one application in regard to one area of-
Yes, you can do one or the other.
Right. So it makes no sense to try to do them both? Am I right or am I wrong?
It contradicts itself.
In that science area, did you find referenced to a charter school that's not here?
Yes, there were some references that, for instance, in the chemistry syllabus, a quote that says, "In keeping with the Medical Academy's charter, medically relevant chemistry topics will include chemical reactions of pharmaceutical drugs." This is a reference to another charter application that does not apply to this one. It also goes on to say the topics will include in Chemistry I, a basic first-level chemistry course, carbohydrates, proteins, DNA, nutrition, and the use and structure of chemical reactions and pharmaceutical drugs again. Those topics are actually not found in the actual syllabus for Chemistry I and are far beyond the scope of that course.
So now we have identification of a different charter school. Is this a Medical Academy charter school? Is this a medical school, based on your review?
These, those quotes, I believe, are left over from another charter school and not the application before us.
As far as, but we don't know.
To the best of my knowledge. It's referring to the Medical Academy's charter and the courses built around those kinds of goals and expectations, which do not apply.
Overall, the skills that are listed, what is your opinion in regard to the skills that they are attempting to list in this summary?
Taken as a whole, in all the sections of the application that applies to the science courses, we find a sequence and course descriptions that are not coherent because the elements come from different places with different purposes.
So are they teaching at a level that we are, attempting to teach at a level that we would expect?
No, because they're not coherent.
Is there anything else you have to offer?
Without a clear understanding of what in fact the sequence of learning and progression is intended to be, it would be impossible to expect to get the results that the application commends to us.
And it's not in this application, is it?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you state your name, please?
Amy McDonald Mulligan.
And your position?
I am the Common Core Math Facilitator for the School District.
Could you pull your bike a little closer? And could you repeat what you said? I'm sorry.
I am the Common Core Math Facilitator for the District.
And a little bit about your background?
I graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Engineering from the United States Military Academy at West Point. I served on 10 years' active duty in reserves as a military intelligence officer. I went and received my Secondary Mathematics Certification from the State University of New York. I have a master's degree from Gannon University in Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm also certified in Educational Leadership and as a Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction.
And have you had the opportunity to review the mathematics summary that is contained within the application?
Yes, I have.
And based on that, did you take a look at the curriculum and the framework of that application?
Yes, I did.
And what did you find?
It can best be characterized as confusing and contradictory, and there are several examples of that.
Go ahead, provide us those examples.
Similar to science, there were three different courses of study listed in the documents as far as the coursework the students would progress through. In one case, the course of study, the sequence was pre-algebra, Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, applied math, and statistics. In a second instance, it was pre-algebra, geometry, Algebra II, workplace math, and statistics. And this one was most concerning because there was absolutely no indication that Algebra I was a requirement. In the third case, the course was pre-algebra, Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus, and calculus.
So, in three different areas of the application, they indicate they're teaching three different syllabuses of courses?
That's correct. And additionally, the course descriptions do not even match each other. So, there are different places where the course descriptions are located, and for the different courses, the Algebra I course description in one case does not match, not even close to match, the Algebra I course description in a second location in the document.
Okay. Do they talk about workplace math?
They do, but I don't know what that means. It's not designated anywhere in any of the curriculum documents.
Is it a good idea to take calculus if you haven't had pre-calculus?
No, it's not. They have their senior course options are even more confusing because in their schedule of classes, they only are offering senior math in second semester, and their choices that they have listed are Algebra II, pre-calculus, and calculus, but all of those are four-year courses. It would not be appropriate to only offer them over a semester. They have problems with also at the beginning, in ninth grade, they specifically say that a student can move right into geometry without taking Algebra I if they have had Algebra I in eighth grade, or if they have stronger backgrounds in mathematics. And I'm not quite sure what that is, but it is never appropriate for a student to move right into geometry without having and being successful in a rigorous Algebra I class.
If you're going to take the Keystone Exam, don't you need to have algebra prior to that Keystone Exam?
Absolutely, because it is an Algebra I Keystone Exam.
What about the standards? Did you take a look at the summary based on the standards?
I did, and there were a couple more problems, though, with the courses. We also, as in science, found lots of references to apply geometric concepts to medical ideas. Similarly, the Algebra II syllabus lists, how can we use Algebra II concepts in the medical field? And this, of course, has nothing to do with the purpose of the charter that's before us. And getting as specific as their pre-calculus syllabus, they simply cut and pasted chapter headings to months. So, for example, they have two months dedicated to the study of trigonometry, where that has to be a good semester of trigonometry study. And it was nonsensical to me that they just put each chapter heading by month. It was obvious that they didn't inspect any of the instructional materials to see about how long each of those content areas should have taken.
Anything else in regard to the structure?
No.
Go back to my other question then, back to the standards. Did you look at standards?
Yes, I did. And again, there were several problems. At one place, they say that the objective is for a back-to-basics curriculum, and that does not match with another quote, which was moving from instruction to inquiry. And when they say back-to-basics and inquiry, that just does not make any sense at all. There were numerous dated references, as we've already discussed, to the PASA and the Foresight, which no longer apply to assessment. The Common Core State Standards require three mathematical shifts, which are focus, coherence, and rigor. And none of those were addressed well in this document, but are necessary if their students have a fighting chance to pass the Keystone Exam. So, the first shift is focus, and what that means is that the courses should focus strongly where the standards focus. Since their syllabi are copies of headings from the textbooks, those textbooks are made for the National Common Core, the CCSS. The PA Core standards are different. No one, unlike what Dr. Kurtz said, makes textbooks based on the PA Core standards. And so, it has to be done, what we're doing in our district, is we are taking instructional materials and we are eliminating or adding parts so it represents the PA Core instead of just copying and pasting what's in the National Common Core. So, for example, in their Algebra I syllabus, they include quadratic equations and exponential functions. That is not in the PA Core, which means this is a lack of focus. Similarly, the Algebra II syllabus includes systems of equations, which should be taught in Algebra I according to the PA Core, and they include trigonomic functions, excuse me, which should be taught in pre-calculus. So, again, it's a big problem with the focus of their course structure. Finally, in the pre-calculus syllabus, it includes many PA Core Algebra II topics, such as the composition of functions and logarithms. So, this lack of focus in their curriculum documents, they're following the old mile-wide, inch-deep philosophy instead of what the Common Core requirement is, which is to significantly narrow and deepen the way time and energy is spent in the math classroom. In other words, to focus on the major work of the course, and the focus was not evident anywhere in this document.
So, they're not in accordance with the standards' bottom line?
No, and the other two parts of that, coherence, they can't be coherent without focus. Coherence means how do things progress from course to course? If you don't have the focus based on the PA Core standards of what is supposed to be in the courses, then the course listings can't be coherent. And finally, the third aspect of the standards is called rigor. This might be the most significant deficit. Rigor doesn't mean harder as we normally think of it. Rigor means an instruction, assignments, and assessment all need to include three things. The first is conceptual understanding, the second is application, and the third is procedural skill and fluency. And there is no indication based on this curriculum that the proposed school understands, let alone has planned for this instructional shift. An example for the Algebra I curriculum, one of the course descriptions claimed the course will prepare students to approach and solve problems following a logical succession of steps, and that is no longer appropriate. They, traditionally, that's the way we've always done it. We've focused on procedural skill and fluency. So, the conceptual understanding piece and the application piece, I couldn't find. And this might be a minor point, but one of the technology pieces in Algebra I was listed scientific calculators. That's not appropriate. In the City of Erie School District, all of our Algebra I students have graphing calculators, which you really need to have to lead the conceptual understanding piece of Algebra I, which is what we're trying to do.
So, it's outdated?
Pardon me?
It's totally outdated?
It's, right. It was difficult, parts of it were difficult to understand, but my general conclusion is that it is outdated, at least as far as aligning to the standards.
Did you look at what they're proposing in regard to what you practice on a daily basis or what the Erie School District teachers use on a daily basis?
Yes, I did.
And what did you find?
All of our Erie School District high school teachers have extensively trained in the Common Core, not only the mathematics content standards, but also the mathematical shifts and the mathematical practices, and that has occurred over the past three years since the Common Core standards were approved. The school district instructional leadership has partnered with the Student Achievement Partners, though that was an organization founded by the people who actually wrote the Common Core, and because of our relationship with GE, we have been able to partner with those authors. And their primary goal now is to help districts to implement it. There are not many districts that have the opportunity to work with them as closely as we have, and that partnership has proven invaluable, not only to the leaders of the district, but the teachers, but fundamentally, the students. We are in the process of writing a new district Algebra I curriculum, which is being implemented. It is aligned to the PA Core standards. It focuses on what the standards are and what the kids need to know, and it's focused on the standards in both content and also in practice. The other thing is there's no indication they're going to offer honors-level courses. We do that over all grades, beginning with Algebra I. We offer more mathematics courses and electives, including trigonometry, trig pre-calc honors, calculus honors-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Trigonometry, trig pre-calculus honors, calculus honors, academic math, consumer math, probability and statistics, and statistics honors. And the Erie School District also offers AP Calculus, and that listing of math topics does not include more classes that are taught at Collegiate Academy. We also have a dual enrollment program with Gannon University for students who want to and are qualified to take college-level math classes. And finally, we in our high schools do not offer pre-algebra because taking pre-algebra as a freshman is inconsistent with a student being able to pass the Algebra I Keystone Exam. It is not offered in any of our high schools. The lowest math class we offer is Algebra I.
So, in summary, what's your opinion of this application and this math curriculum?
I would be very concerned that the students would be prepared to pass the Keystone Exam based on the PA Core standards.
Is this a product that's a model?
I would not consider it a model, no. We have looked extensively in working with the other GE districts at curricula around the country and also within our own state, and this is deficient from the other curricula we have looked at.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything else to offer?
I do not, thank you.
And your position, please?
I'm the Director of Elementary Education for the Erie School District.
And a little bit about your background?
Lifelong educator. I've been involved in education for over 20 years. My first 10 years as a teacher, 10 more as a building administrator, and then in just this past year as the Director of Elementary Education.
And did you also analyze this application?
I have.
And what was your focus?
My focus really was looking at some of the assertions that the application made in comparison to programs that our school district already offers our students.
So, comparing what they're offering versus the school district of City of Erie?
Well, I had a whole bunch of information on Common Core State Standards. Unfortunately, Amy Mulligan mentioned most of those, but I will reiterate many of those, and one of them being that our school district actually has been involved in the Common Core State Standards career in college-ready programs for over two years. It began by initiating a Common Core immersion group, teachers and administrators who have worked hand-in-hand with the Achievement Partners as well as GE and their foundation. Some of that work included working with districts across the country, including New York, cities of New York, Cincinnati, St. Louis, Louisville, and Stanford, Connecticut. This also included last year hosting a first annual regional forum here in Erie, Pennsylvania. That was the school district that hosted that, and we'll be doing that again this year. We also have been, as Mrs. Mulligan pointed out, aligning our curriculum, and I want to say that again, we've been aligning our curriculum to meet the Common Core State Standards, because really that is what districts have to do, and that's what schools have to do, is they have to take curriculum and align it to the standards. There is no Common Core curriculum. And that has been ongoing work over the past two years in math and literacy. In literacy specifically, we have used the Understanding by Design approach, which is also cited in the application. However, in reviewing the application, there does not seem to be real, any real understanding of the Understanding by Design approach, as it is not laid out in any kind of implementation or any kind of a focus. However, our literacy committee has really looked at using Understanding by Design and identifying the goals that we want students to achieve, then designing assessments, and then back-mapping to design the instruction to meet those needs. Additionally, our school district has worked extensively in building partnerships with local area higher education universities and colleges, as well as businesses. These partnerships include, just most recently, the Archbishop Scholarship, which Gannon University initiated, which would provide Erie City students a free ride if they meet certain qualifications to Gannon. We also, as Ms. Mulligan cited, have dual enrollment in all of the local universities. So, again, it offers actual college-approved credits to our students who are still in high school. We also offer AP College Board-approved credits in our high schools. Additionally, we have a number of programs in our high schools, including the College for Every Student Program and the Go College Program. These programs specifically provide our students with opportunities to visit and be involved with college life, so that it prepares them for the successes of the future.
Can I ask you a question about that? I mean, it sounds like we're doing things that do ready people for college and try to get them up to that level. If you have a curriculum that just meets the Common Core standards, are you showing a curriculum that has advanced placement or provides for advanced studies?
Well, I mean, obviously, no. You have to have numerous planning, you have to have numerous partnerships, you have to have board certification, college board certification. There are a number of steps that you have to take to provide those opportunities to your students. So, no, just by saying that you have a Common Core curriculum, that's just one step. There are multiple other steps that are required for that.
That's kind of the minimum, isn't it?
It would be the minimum.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, and that's our, so that's our college prep, but we also have a number of career-ready programs. So, for instance, at one of our high schools, seniors are often usually expected to work in cooperative partnerships with the- in cooperative partnerships with the jobs that they'd be moving into. So when they become seniors, they work cooperative internships in the actual jobs, whether they be trades or businesses, that would be potentially hiring them when they would graduate from high school, or if they were to move into a two-year or four-year degree. Again, they have experience in high school, moving into those specific job areas.
Anything else you found?
Yes. The third area that I looked at was professional development. I know that the Huxley Charter School application mentioned a professional development plan that focuses specifically on Friday early dismissals to provide additional time for their teachers to work through professional development. For the Erie School District, we use a number of different strategies and have been working with a number of nationally-recognized programs and organizations, including Connie Moss from Duquesne University, Research for Better Teaching, which is spearheaded by John Seffir. We also have a partnership with the University of Pennsylvania, the PLN Program. We also have been adopting an instructional coaching model throughout our schools, which includes embedded professional development. So this is teachers who are actually getting professional development on the job, so it's not that they go necessarily and meet and talk, although those things happen as well through professional learning committees, but they are working on the job and getting on-the-job training, and that includes also model classrooms that are used in two of our high schools as well.
Are our teachers highly qualified?
It is required by the state that all of our teachers are highly qualified.
Anything else you have to offer?
I would just, if I could, make a statement that, because I've been thinking about this as I was reviewing this application, and invested in the importance of the future of our students, and it's vital, and it's one of the reasons that we took so much time, I took so much time, I can't speak for everybody else, to review the application. And I was thinking, the other day when I was out to dinner with my wife, that oftentimes we might go to a pizza shop and think to ourselves, "I could make pizza this good," or maybe even better than this. But what ends up happening is that we often don't make that pizza, or we don't take that leap, because there's a difference between just making pizza in our kitchen, or having the idea of making better pizza, and actually going out, buying a restaurant, ordering all of the food that is required, hiring all the staff that's required, building a menu that's required, and pulling off that actual restaurant that is successful in making pizza for everybody. And we're not making pizza. We're teaching kids. And so I was very concerned when I reviewed the actual application and found so many errors and so many disconnects, that this was their menu for making pizza.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Nancy Sedali. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Academics in Erie City Schools. I've also worked as Assistant Superintendent in Wattsburg Area School District, as well as Superintendent in Wattsburg Area School District. Excuse me. My degrees are in English and as a reading specialist. I've also worked in curriculum, both in Erie and in Wattsburg, and also with the Annenberg Coaching Initiative.
And did you obviously examine this application also?
Absolutely.
And based on your review, did you, as I have questioned, found some similarities between the Huxley Charter School and the Erie Biosciences Charter School, which is an application submitted to a different community?
Yes. You've already cited some, but most of the course overview information contained in the Huxley Charter School for Liberal Arts and Sciences is duplicated in the Erie Bioscience Charter School application. And I find this odd, because the vision, the mission, and the grade configurations of these two schools are vastly different. I believe Biosciences was actually for grades six through 12, yet the course overviews are nearly identical. And I believe you also mentioned the required core subjects document was identical, down to the graphic on the front. It was a distinct document in Biosciences, listed as Appendix A, where in the Huxley application, it was just kind of listed in the middle. I could reiterate all the pages that you already named, because I found the exact same duplications. Would you like me to do that, or?
No, I think we've addressed that sufficiently.
All right.
Did you find that the program described in the application supports the needs assessment provided?
Well, initially, it was a little difficult to even know who they were recruiting. From the narrative provided, it was difficult to determine the population. The Huxley application indicates the school will draw students from the Erie area and neighboring communities, and that was page 52. On page 56, the application states the school will serve a diversity of students by being able to draw from throughout the Erie community. Other statements said, "Huxley Charter School will be able to use its curriculum to provide an educational experience that supports true equity among the most diverse populations," page 56, "and the Huxley School will recruit students from throughout the Erie metropolitan area," page 57. Again, as you pointed out, the application indicated that most parents, they are reaching out to have Liddour no command of the English language. However, again, as we pointed out, there was only a .6 to 1 ELL teacher, so I had concerns about how they would actually service the ELL population. They also estimated 15% of their students would require special education services. Erie City has about 25% special ed. I was not sure how they arrived at that percentage. Okay, the Huxley School also planned to address poverty and its effects to improve the workforce and overall business climate in the region. Yet, there is really no viable curriculum for that, especially for our regular or struggling readers, writers, and mathematicians, no matter whether they're drawn from the regular population, ELL population, or special ed population. There doesn't appear to be a career readiness track, although there was one reference made to working in the service industry, and that seemed a little out of place. I won't reiterate, because they did a good job of stating what, you know, makes them unique, as far as the major, and choosing a major within a discipline, and then choosing a pathway, although I was unsure what the pathways were. In the curriculum, it does indicate one health pathway, but I am seeing now that they're adding other majors, so perhaps that's the reason that the liberal arts framework provided on page 12 had no delineation of courses, and actually was very vague. So again, many of our students would benefit by being career-ready, and there didn't seem to be much emphasis on this option. At one point, they were stating that their students would hopefully move on to masters or doctorate work.
So if I, am I correct, that there's gaps, there's things that are missing? I mean, they make representations, but there's nothing for a career path. There's nothing, there are representations that are matched up by what they've provided?
Correct. There are inconsistencies.
What about, I guess we've talked about that, and actually, Dr. Badams has talked about this Common Core curriculum and all the references to the Common Core curriculum throughout the document.
However, I would like to say that in the document, what is not covered by the standards, it states that the standards define what all students should know and be expected to do, not how teachers should teach. And while the standards make reference to some particular forms of content, such as mythology, foundational US documents, and Shakespeare, they don't enumerate all or most of the content that the students can learn. So their bottom line really was, the standards must therefore be complemented by a well-developed, content-rich curriculum, consistent with the expectations laid out in the standards document. And I would have to say, I don't believe Huxley has provided us with a well-developed, content-rich curriculum at this point.
Are there concerns about instructional shifts that guide the implementation to those standards?
Yes, and I believe Amy already covered those for mathematics. In English Language Arts, the three basic shifts are building knowledge through content-rich nonfiction, reading and writing grounded in evidence, and regular practice with complex text and academic vocabulary. I looked over in particular the English IX curriculum, and there was little evidence of moving towards incorporating any nonfiction into English IX. In the Common Core framework, they are telling us that 55% of reading that students complete in grade eight should be informational in nature, and 70% of reading that students complete in grade 12 should be informational in nature. So other than three weeks that were dedicated to the study of a piece called Gifted Hands to Ben Carson's Story, which is an autobiographical novel, it really was not apparent that nonfiction text is infused into the Language Arts grade nine health curriculum, and health was the only pathway I saw mentioned. I think it was also notable that the standards that were linked to Gifted Hands were mistakenly keyed as fiction standards. So they are attributing fiction standards to that particular work. There's no indication that they're moving towards text-based questioning to aid students in revisiting and more deeply comprehending text. It doesn't appear that the developers of the English IX course, whoever they were, were really aware that the students should be completing close reading of texts and citing evidence by way of response. It does tell us in the standards document that students who are college and career-ready cite specific evidence when offering oral or written interpretations of the text, use relevant evidence when supporting their own text in writing and speaking, make their reasoning clear to the listener, and constructively evaluate the others' use of evidence. So again, their references are too vague to ascertain whether they're aware of that shift or not. The Huxley document does claim that expository writing is a primary focus of their program, yet research writing and introduction to thesis is not listed in the framework until junior and senior year. And again, the framework for Common Core state standards tells us by grade eight, 35% of the writing should be informational, and by grade 12, 40% should be persuasive and/or informational. So the overwhelming focus on writing in high school should be on argument, informational, and explanatory texts. We do see a research project referenced, but again, it is not apparent that the informational and persuasive writing needed would be taught and assessed. The standards also focus on text complexity, because the ability to read complex text is really the most significant factor that differentiates students who are college-ready from those who are not college-ready. We looked at the lexile levels, the readability levels of the texts for English IX, and they were below the readability level for a high school text for that grade level. As well, the health choices are choosing pieces that I'm assuming were chosen because they relate to the field of medicine. So they had Postmortem by Patricia Cornwell, The Andromeda Strain by Michael Cretin, and A Poetic Life in Medical Hands by Blair Levake. The rationale for selection, again, I'm assuming was that the works relate to the field of medicine, and will be, show the responsibilities and ethics of healthcare providers. However, in the curriculum, there's no evidence of planning that would lead to employing these texts to achieve those specific goals. And significantly, the overviews of the works were taken from amazon.com reviews, and one summary on the back cover of the book.
So they're just cut and paste out of amazon.com?
Yes, they certainly are. I have them with me, if you would like to see the evidence of that.
No, I don't think so.
All right. And there was no selection process in place for the texts, and no method of determining the readability level of the texts. Again, in vocabulary study, it was simply listed as embedded, so there was no plan for incorporating two-tier, tier-two and tier-three vocabulary, again, as recommended in the shifts to the Common Core standards.
So, did you also look at the liberal arts framework, sample schedules, and course descriptions?
Yes, I certainly did. I looked at the liberal arts framework, the narrative, the liberal arts framework generally on page 12, the narratives of courses provided on page 16, and the course description catalog, which mirrored the Biosciences catalog. These have already been pointed out, I believe, in science. In social studies, in the liberal arts framework, they listed world history, US history, civics, and world history too, or modern history, as the course of study. In the narrative, they listed world history, civics and government, modern world history, and/or American history. In the course description catalog, they listed only three years of history, US history, world history, and civics and economics.
So again, just like in science, just like in math, three different syllables, none of them make sense, none of them match, three different areas of the application.
No, if I were a parent, I would not know enrolling what the expectation for my student would be. In English, in the liberal arts framework, they're listing English Literature and Composition IX, English Literature and Composition 10, and English Literature and Composition 11, and English Literature and Composition 12. However, when you go to the course description, they're listed as English IX, honors English IX, English 10, honors English 10, English 11, honors English 11, English 12, honors English 12. So again, there are just major discrepancies found in the description of these courses. And I believe you also pointed this out, but the art description was not consistent with the offerings in the framework, because there was separate curriculum listed for art, when actually, the narrative describes art as being integrated with language arts.
Did you find inconsistencies in the philosophy underpinning the curricula, as well as the development process?
Basically, again, the development process for the curriculum, at one point, the document claimed that teachers would be expected to spend several weeks each summer developing curriculum, collecting the materials, and working together to plan and coordinate thematic units across grade levels. That was on page 85. However, on page 56, it stated, "The teachers will work with a sequence of courses and materials that are standardized across the entire country. They will have access to fully-developed lesson plans, and consequently, will have more time to consider innovative classroom techniques." So I was unsure what their process was in reference to the teachers and the development of curriculum. And as far as philosophy, at times, they referred to their philosophy as a back-to-basics education. That was page 58. At times, they were promising an innovative learning environment, page 8. At times, they said that they were going to recruit teachers from institutions that had progressive pedagogy, page 87, and at times, they described the curriculum as accelerated, page 57. At one point, they said they were promoting project-based learning, where students would work in pairs or small groups to create, design, plan, and investigate real-world problems. However, on page 10, the application said, "The focus would be on individual student performance that would lead to a vital cycle of instruction assessment and intervention." performance that would lead to a vital cycle of instruction, assessment, and intervention." So again, it's a little unclear as to whether the major focus would be the project-based learning or on the individual student learning.
So again, inconsistent, four different areas of the application, saying totally different things with a totally different philosophy in regard to education.
Yes.
Is the language in the application even current, with current understanding?
Much of the language is not current. They are still listing PSSA as the standardized test to be used at the high school level, and PSSA is no longer even given at the high school level, and that is on page 46. There are references to field testing of the Keystone assessments, and this process has been completed. Erie City School actually gave its Keystone's in December of 2013. Again, a little more of a minor point, but they continually reference Bloom's Taxonomy with the Common Core State Standards, but all the training that we have taken advises us to use the web's depth of knowledge as the rigor measure. So it's a little outdated to be referencing Bloom's. And the Common Core standards were adopted July 1, 2010, so considering that was, you know, three to four years ago, this application does not show significant movement towards Common Core State Standards at this point. Also, there was a reference from Newsweek Magazine that was called Recent, and actually, it related to early learners, so I'm not sure how it was relevant, but it was from 2007.
And you indicated the Common Core standards were adopted when?
2010.
So if I'm drafting this, an application for a charter school, and I know the Common Core standards were adopted in 2010, could I draft this application that would meet those Common Core standards and have a good application?
If you were well-versed and had knowledge of the Common Core State Standards, you certainly could.
I mean, they've been around for four years now.
Yes.
So this document doesn't meet the Common Core standards, does it?
As it stands now, no.
Did you find a lack of detail in regard to English IX?
I'm sorry, concerning.
A lack of detail in regard to the syllabus in English IX?
As far as formatting?
Yes.
Yes. Basically, the curriculum purports to be using elements of the Understanding by Design model, but the Understanding by Design model has three stages, the desired results, the assessment evidence, and the learning plan. And those components were designed by the authors, Wiggins and Ty, to work together. They really can't be separated or compromised. So the essential questions listed in the course syllabus, for example, in English IX Health, don't relate to achieving the goal of exploring the field of medicine, even though essential questions are one component of the Understanding by Design model. The competencies listed in the various curriculum aren't related to the study of particular texts. They're bulleted at the beginning of the syllabus, so there's really no clear indication of how these competencies will be addressed or assessed. Many of them appear to be cut and pasted from the PDE-SAS site. The objectives aren't related to the study of particular texts, they're listed in categories, such as fiction, nonfiction, writing, and vocabulary. There is an indication that the students will reach mastery of these objectives, yet there's no criteria for how they would reach mastery. There is a category in some of the curricula that says, "Teaching strategies utilized." However, within this category, there are also assessment strategies listed, like tests, quizzes, and essays. There are also resources listed, such as DVDs and video. So the curriculum developer seems unable to distinguish among those categories to delineate what actual teaching strategies will be used. The learning activities, again, are laundry lists. They really aren't related to a particular lesson or standard. They're considering worksheets as learning activities, which again, is somewhat outdated and not consistent with the Common Core State Standards. They do not have assessments, and assessments that would be designated as diagnostic, formative, and summative, and that's very vague in nature. The application does state at one point that students meeting, whether students meet standards will determine their movement to the next level. That's leading me to believe that high school could possibly take longer than four years if you do not get to progress if you have not met those standards. And again, the main issue I see is just vagueness. A teacher really would not be able to use this curriculum to guide instruction, provide any measures of accountability, set reasonable standards, or mark a clear path. And those on page 11 are the goals that Huxley puts forth as their goals for the curriculum. And that's further complicated just by the fact that the content of the liberal arts courses is not defined.
Did you look at, and I look at this issue of major?
Yes, I did. I did find testimonials from a number of colleges and deans of admission at those colleges that are not recommending selection of a major as a sound educational practice. I have one from the Dean of Admissions and Financial Aid at Wesleyan University that says, "Please resist the pressure to pick a major to make the college process easier. Relatives and counselors all will ask, 'What do you want to study?'" "You should tell admission officers, write in your application about things that interest you, because we seek students who are curious, creative, and well-prepared to explore." There's more to that, but that was the major part. I also saw one from University of Pennsylvania that says, "High school students should not feel compelled to have their intended major selected for college applications. Most college students declare their major towards the end of sophomore year of college. This sense of undecidedness or undeclared can come from a strong interest in multiple fields, so you may want to speak to those interests and check multiple boxes on the application. Most faculty and departments in Liberal Arts and Sciences will encourage you to explore many interests by taking courses not even offered at most high schools. You may discover then new..."